Sit down and get back up. If everybody will please rise. And welcome to the Town of Beekman Planning Board Meeting this evening. If you'll take notice, there's an exit there in the back and here as well. And join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our service personnel and the people who are suffering in Ukraine, Syria, and Turkey. Thank you.
We're a little bitter off than that.
Hey Dan, is SEMCO here tonight?
They asked earlier today to be adjourned to the April meeting.
Okay.
Is that SEMCO?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's been a change in our agenda. The public hearing for SEMCO has been pushed. All right, so the next item on the agenda is Barton Orchard's Farm Market. Who'll be presenting this evening?
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Victoria Polidoro from Monhausen Shaw Polidoro. Can I use your phone? Michelle Zurfus, Joe Berger.
If you could, Victoria, yeah, stand at the podium. Maybe you could start over so he could get that on the tape.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Victoria Polidoro from Monhausen Shaw Polidoro. Here with Joe Berger, Michelle Zurfus, James Gomez Anderson, and Peter Barton on behalf of Barton Orchard's, which is seeking a streamlined site plan approval for agricultural use, a farm market at 64 Beekman-Pocquay Road. Based on comments from the public and from the board at the last hearing, we've now submitted updated plans, which include several items which Joe Berger is going to go through in detail. But I do want to note a few of them. So additional screening and relocation of the dumpster so that it's not visible from the roadway. It is now located more than 130 feet from the neighboring property line. It's been moved to almost behind the building, which we think is an appropriate location for a dumpster. And so for frame of reference, as you go through this plan, your code does provide some standards for commercial uses that abut a residential use. We are not saying that this is a commercial use, it's an agricultural use. But in a similar situation, a commercial use, according to your code, could not have parking closer than 60 feet to the lot line, to a residential lot line. Here, we're at 68 feet, so we exceed that commercial standard even for this agricultural use. Your code does not have a specific setback for dumpsters for commercial uses or from residential property lines. But we did take a site visit today to several locations in the town to see what your standards were. So the Stop &amp; Shop in Beekman, it's approximately 60 feet from the dumpster to the residential neighbor. There's no screening of that dumpster. And it's also within 30 feet of a well. And there didn't seem to be any issues with smells, or litter, or garbage. Joe, do you want us to show some of the pictures to the board members? We will submit pictures for the record after the meeting, but Joe is going to just show you the pictures on the phone right now. So again, that's the Stop &amp; Shop dumpster, approximately 60 feet to the neighboring property line.
How you doing, Joe? Good to see you.
I'll submit the pictures.
Thank you.
This dumpster is over 130 feet away. So Cumberland Farms also abut some residential properties. Cumberland Farms was approximately 85 feet from the property line. That one did have some screening. Station Grill, 40 feet from the property line. That one did have some screening. We're more than three times further than Station Grill. The diner, 130 feet to the property line and no screening from the residential properties. And Claude Valley Plaza. I didn't get a measurement because of all the snow, but there was no screening between the residential properties and the parking lot. So there is no quote-unquote "standard" for your dumpsters. And what is being provided on this plan is more protective of the residential neighbors than probably any other commercial business in the town. Or any other, you know, large commercial business in the town that we visited today. So we hope that you appreciate that change. We hope the neighbors appreciate that change. We think it's, you know, moving it that extra 20 feet is going to make an additional difference. Again, it's not going to be visible from the roadway. Another change that was made that we wanted to bring to your attention is the height of the fence near the EV parking has been raised by a foot.
Victoria, if I can just ask, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to, now, I believe you increased it more than just 20 feet, right? I calculate, based on your measurements, about 134, is it 130 or 134 from the property line? And then, so according to my numbers, and I could be wrong, all right, you move, it now resides about 170, let's say two-thirds of a football field away from the back door of Drew and Beth's house there. All right, that's, just to give them a frame of reference and an understanding of how far you moved it, all right. I just, I thought it was more than 20 feet.
Well, it might have been more than 20 feet. I don't have the old bin in front of me. It's at 132 feet now from the property line.
Right.
And their house is 65 feet from property line.
Yeah.
And it's not in the same plot.
Right, so it's almost 70 yards, all right, from literally the closest neighbor's back door. All right, so I wanted to give everybody a frame of reference.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also, as far as the EV parking. We heard the concerns. And so the fence has been increased by a foot in height by the addition of a berm. So it's still going to be a right-sized fence, a six-foot fence, but there'll be a berm under it, so it is a little bit higher. The high, tall light post has been removed from that section, so you won't have, you won't see the light post over the fence. I also want to note that in general, electric parking vehicles are quiet. They're much quieter than a diesel truck or a vehicle that runs on gas. And so by putting the electric vehicle parking there, which is permitted by your code and does meet even your commercial district requirements, we've tried to mitigate any impacts on the neighbors. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe Berger to review the specifics. I can details more technically. But I do ask for the opportunity to address the board again after the public comment. Thank you.
Joe, before you begin, I just wanted to say, the plan from before was 88 feet, the dumpster to the property line.
Okay.
So now I think it's 134.
Yeah, okay, so it is, it is right.
Yep.
Right, okay. And I believe Michelle has some copies of your submission. They came in today. If anybody in the audience would like, they're offering you copies if you would like them. So Michelle, where are you?
She's sitting right here.
So she has some copies. If you'll raise your hand, she can hand you a copy. I don't know how many she has, so. Oh, okay.
That was a good number.
Okay, yep.
Just a guess, I mean.
Good number.
Does anybody standing want a chair? No, you? Anybody? Yes.
Okay, so this is Joe Berger. For those of you who just arrived, he's the engineer for the Barton Orchard project.
Victoria, actually, did a pretty good job explaining, so I don't want to repeat, but I think I can add a little bit more. The dumpster, we definitely turned it 9:45 and moved it further away. We also added a concrete apron up to it because we want, not just to have blacktop milling, so we need that concrete apron to it in front. But it is surrounded by a vinyl fence for screening. And we added, we have three trees, which would be Norway spruce, placed between what would see the dumpster and the neighbors to fill in some gaps from the large cluster of trees that are there. We did raise the fence along the south line, which would be between the property line and the two neighbors, adding a berm that's a foot to it and a half. So try, because this parking lot is sloping, we want a fence that's really sloping width if we want it to stay level, looks better. So the berm will accomplish that by making it more level as we can and also increase certain portions of it.
And that, that's behind the UV?
Yeah, right behind.
Yeah.
We also added, so in the same general area, we have, we had three Norway spruces. We actually had three trees, changed it to three Norway spruces, which would be behind what is a hammerhead. I'll describe that in a second, that's supposed to be there. We added two deciduous trees, which would be super capable. So we have a combination of five additional trees in the area, which would be between the neighbors and what I call the hammerhead, which is the turnaround we're providing for the firetruck. In the previous submission, which really wasn't thoroughly looked submitted, so this is, I guess, maybe the first full submission with that change from the circle we had, our submission that were called an alternative, would be a drive-in coming in, what they left turn into this south driveway with the hammerhead, which is nothing more than a T, which is the box design for NFPA standards. So that firetruck would come in, back up, and turn around instead of having a circle. It reduces the blacktop, in this case, the milling impervase. It reduces that, allows that area to be further away from the property line. And allowed us to keep a few trees that were going to be cut down before. Specifically, the 48-inch tree right there off, would be, if you look at the top left, the right side north of the hammerhead, that 48-inch tree. And the two smaller 12-inch trees are now being preserved. As you see, we don't have any parking in front of the building either. We just have the drive-through, no parking, so that direct access or view to the building from Beekman-Pocquay Road is seen. Our parking is off the new corner between. Next change we did was the asphalt walkway, which goes from the main entrance to Barton Farms, all the way to the building. We decided to make that a concrete one because it's more sturdy than the blacktop. And that's pretty much the changes we proposed.
Thank you. So before we open up the public hearing, I just want to explain that public hearings, everybody can talk regardless of where you're from. There's a three-minute or so time limit. If, if you keep your comments concise, you'll be able to say everything you have to say within those three minutes. The purpose is not to cut you short, it's so that everybody has an opportunity to talk. So that no one is prevented from airing comments that they have. So with that said, did you have a question, Peter? Oh, sure, yeah, but just bear with me. I have to, I have to have a vote so that we can open the meeting first, all right? So the, the time has come to open the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Faye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous? Peter, you're on. Thank you.
So, so I'm Peter Barton, I think most of us, myself and my family, we've been, so we've been farming here in the town for, it's been like 46 years. I have to say, when I came here as a kid onto the farm, farming, I always had this vision of a farm stand down front. But if you see on the top of that, originally, we only owned a 2.4 acre as a road frontage. And I always knew that it just was not cohesive to have something built there. So when I had the opportunity to buy the house next door, almost the four acres, which was part of the farm going way back, I realized that I was able to take this idea and bring it to fruition. So standing in front of you tonight, this is something I've thought about for many, many, like decades and decades of my life. We've looked at it, we've done this, we've been two years now with this idea going forward. And I think what we've all worked on, I think, is coming out to be very positive. And this is something that all the town can share and enjoy going forward, so. There is a lot of trees on that property still that we're keeping. So there'll be a lot of screening on that. The fact that seeing the building in the front, so we're keeping the original building, a building on the back of it. That building is from 1840, so as you walk in, we're going to keep some of that characteristics of the 1840s. So it's the very old walls, if you've never seen it, where it's slapboard, where it was all the plaster and all that goes on it. So that'll be visible when you walk in. I think the character of the building is going to be prominent. And what we add on will really add to it too, so.
Thank you. All right. So is there someone else who would like to approach the podium and be heard? Anybody else in the audience? Drew?
How you doing? My name's Dave Carl.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, if you could just repeat your name at the?
My name's Dave Carl. Last time we were here, we were there and said something about a septic system. And I was, I'm still trying to comprehend it, but if, if the septic system, I mean, is this like for, like a football stadium?
All right, if you'll just bear with me one minute.
I have a hard time understanding. I'm trying to finish it.
So here's Beekman-Pocquay Road. We call that the new road. Now, Peter Barton's entrance, it's over here. And he comes in to the main entrance of his farm, here.
And I'm looking at the same picture here on this piece of paper, right?
You are.
Right.
And everybody, I'll kind of give you a clearer overview of where everything is on here. So you're coming in from Beekman-Pocquay Road, here. And then you're making a right. This is an old road. What was it called, Peter?
County Route 7.
County Route 7, okay. So this was County Route 7 that actually went through the property, parallel to Beekman-Pocquay Road. So the engineers are doing something interesting and new now, where they're, they're able to put the septic underneath a parking area. So here's, here's the farm parking. They're going to put the septic fields here. And they're going to put parking on top of it. But there's a stand of trees here and here, and he's going to come right through it. All right, so then, everything that you see here in gray is milling. So you'll come, you'll come across the millings here. There's some parking over here that he has on these plans. And then these are the electric vehicle charge stations, right here. This is Drew's, and this is Doug's house, here, the meadows. This is the existing building here, all right, with porch, the covered porch. And this is the addition to go on the back. The dumpster is now here, so if, it's, there's a bush right here. So when you look tomorrow, you'll see where I believe it's going to be. There's a small bush right about here. And that's where they're planning on putting the dumpster now, here with the concrete pad. So here is where the backup is for the septic. The Department of Health requires a place, in the event that this fails, here's where the backup fields would go. Very rarely does that ever happen. But there's a stand here of locusts and sugar mints that we'd like to preserve. I'm sure everybody can appreciate how beautiful they are here. Yeah, that's a good idea. Football on the head. Yeah, thank you.
My concern is, I mean, what, I mean, you don't have, what is it? You don't have a septic system for all the people that come up to the farm, right?
No, just, if you could just, just, you didn't do anything wrong here, but I just have to explain, in an environment like this, all right, a public hearing, you're going to speak to the board.
Oh, thanks.
All right, just so you know. And then if at any point, a board member has a question with anybody who approaches the podium, we may or may not address it directly at that moment. But that'll be up to the board member's decision. Generally, what I'll be doing is keeping track of similar questions and then answering them at the end, all right, during discussion.
So again, I was just curious, you know, that septic system is not designed for, like, a football stadium?
No, no.
My expression up there, everything is sport counties, pretty much.
This is going to be a regulated?
My thoughts are, if he's got, I don't know, a good day, 100,000 people up there, 30,000, this is estimations.
Let me just, this septic system has nothing to do with the rest of the farm?
Oh, no, but what I'm saying is, business there, if those 100,000 people travel down and it starts filling up that septic system, that was my question.
I'll fill you in. So there's a certain amount of customers that will be permitted, an occupancy. And it's going to be designed to handle all of the sewage, all right? So it won't get, it's not going to get overwhelmed. It's going to be built according to the Department of Health specifications and the engineers. So that's not a concern.
Like, you don't see where I am on that picture. I'm like, where the river cuts off. If you go down Beekman-Pocquay Road, another 20, 30 yards, it's the commons for, you know, Claude Farms. And that common ground runs up to my property. And there's storm drains for the, you know, the storm, the sewer storms, the storm drains on the road. And right now, you can see, especially our rain, there's the spout. I can just imagine, you know, water runs down. And if we ever had a real issue, I don't know, maybe some of that's something to think about. That's all.
Okay, thank you for your comments. It'll be designed, it'll be designed properly. Anyone else like to? Drew, yes, you're next. Drew, if you could approach the podium.
David Ward, Drew Ballantyne, 7th and Green Street. When, these recent plans here, when were these submitted?
This afternoon. And that's why copies were made and distributed today. I can answer any questions you may have about them.
Okay, well, I asked the town for any updated plans a few weeks ago. And they were gracious enough to, you know, come whole on the request. And I got one page and it was a, something to the effect of the exact way it was last time we were here, where nothing changed.
Right.
Do you agree with that?
Are you saying that, yeah, last week, these weren't in?
Right, there was, there were plans submitted to the town that we looked at.
Yes.
If anything, there was things missing from it.
Yes.
The fence that was gone.
Right, yes.
So this is pretty confusing because we're just getting this now and we have barely 10 minutes to look at it.
Well, if you, if you'd like me to explain, you know, the changes, I'd be more than happy to go over them with you and give you a little extra time because you're entitled to it, so that's not a problem.
I just can't see how we could.
Well, so me?
Barclay on.
Right.
Okay. The EV station is still where it is, correct?
Right. I think the orientation has changed a little bit. So if you look at it, you'll, right now, there's the panel, all right, that's, that's already on the property, right there. The way I see it, Joe, the EV stations are on the left and right side, right? Split, okay. So if you, where that telephone pole is and the electrical panel, the EV stations are left and right. And then directly behind it is the fencing. And then they put another, you'll see the fencing, it looks, it's aligned with the, here, I'll show you here.
Do you want to use this?
What's that?
Do you want this or not?
No, that's all right. No, I'll get confused. The, so you have over here, your electric vehicle charge stations, here and here. I think that's? No, I'm not trying to be difficult. I can't see that. Oh, all right. Can anybody see that? No, no. I got three. Here.
Why don't you take a look at that map? The board shows you, sir.
Drew.
Take a big board there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Could you show them where they are? There you go.
We'll have the engineers show you.
Yeah.
Okay, so these vehicles will still be coming in the same way we're talking about, they're going to be coming in.
Right.
It's not an improvement to me. So this is the, this is the third meeting on this in as many months. And we're not getting anywhere with this, I feel. Because this is, having five or 10 years' book of these plans and then process them and comment on them is, I don't think that's rational. But while we're here, I want to set the record straight on a few things. And there was, this misinformation is being passed online. And it was brought to me by friends and family. Very unappreciated. Something's happened in the past few months regarding property lines. And, you know, the properties were resurfaced. And we came to find that there is in fact, in some spots of my backyard, up to 6 feet now, which is marked proper, which is fine, it is what it is. And we resurfaced ourselves, and it's proper. And we're okay with that. For 25 years, this house was built 25 years ago. For 25 years, it's been treated as such as it is right now, where it was a backyard to 7th and Green Street, okay? But we're fine with that, we understand that, okay? We know where the lines are and follow the rules. Another, some other things that were passed in these comments were, was that, there were a lot of complaints that, you know, there's no planning board approval. Nothing's getting approved. We are, we're victims here. And it's just not the case because this work to this property was done without planning board approval, taking those trees down, moving the electrical around. I was told by the board that that stuff that should have gone before the planning board, before it was even done. I'm still assuming that that's a fact. And I have a problem with that. So that's why we're in the third month of this now. Because they're having problems rearranging everything to, to, to their liking, okay? And not for the common good here. Again, on the subject of the trees. On the subject of the trees. Again, on the subject of the trees, on the, on the subject of the trees, it was passed that, it was our problem to properly screen our property from the market, when in reality, the board told me that it's the onus, the onus is on the market to properly screen their commercial business from the residents. So the trees that I see added here still don't fit that bill to me, lining the properties here.
So, just to talk on that point, Drew.
Okay.
So, there is a buffer from Barton's property line towards your house, right? Which, so the public knows, that is something that, that was built into the plat, all right? Over the years, 20 years, 15, 20, 30 years, different owners, current owners, have been mowing down the buffer, all right? There's a president of a, an HOA that I know, that happens to be here today, he lets that happen in, in our community as well. So if, if that president were to come to my property, he would see that my meadow, it's beautiful, and it's intact, all right? So the applicant has a point when it comes to the maintenance of that buffer zone, all right? But you are correct in that the applicant is bringing a new use to this property, all right, that is next to you, all right? And we're going to talk more about trees and that sort of thing, all right? There's, if you look behind the electric vehicle charge station, he's got an enlarged berm that wasn't there before, okay? Six feet of fence that'll elevate it to seven feet. He has some trees, they're on his side, we're going to try to convince him to put more trees in, in that side yard, okay, at some point in the future, all right? So did that kind of alleviate any of your concerns?
Not really, it's nothing to guarantee. I'm sure the board will do its best to...
Well, yeah, we do have, we do have a lot of influence over, over the site plan, so if you could just try to feel a little more comfortable with what I've, what I've mentioned.
Well, thanks for, for mentioning that, but, you know, this is the third month on this now, and all of a sudden, here, in this last, this last meeting here, all this stuff was put in front of us 10 minutes before we have a chance to comment on it. Meanwhile, the first two meetings, much of those meetings, we're, we're speaking to, you know, we're speaking to the, the character of the owners over there, and it was almost like a filibuster. I mean, that's not what we're here for.
No.
We're, we're here to, we're here to make sure that, we're here to make sure that this, that this, that this market is doing the right thing by, by, by meeting neighbors here. And, you know, I think they've sort of noticed that they're not going to, that's not their mission, their mission is to do what they wanted to do from the beginning, they're getting most, it seems like they're getting most of what they wanted to do from the beginning, and it's in your hands to make sure that where they care.
Yes, understood.
I wish I had more time for all of this stuff.
You, you will have more time, because even if the meeting is, open meeting is closed, you do have an opportunity to provide comment to the building department, the town engineer, the planning board.
By email, yeah.
There is that. Also, realizing that there have been changes, none of this is permanent, all of this, at this point, is strictly discussionary, and the proposals that are before the board, and have been before the board, are strictly discuss, discussionary. And that's the purpose of the open meeting, is to get input from the public, and the board has listened to it and made adjustments, as well as has the applicant in this particular case.
Okay. Where, I didn't see anything in these plans about the operating times.
So, they're not, they're not until 11:00 at night, I think 6:30 in the evening? Peter, what is your intention with that? Because we're seeing a lot of different numbers on, on different documents.
We can, Peter, look, Peter can provide, we can tell you his intention, but given the site plan and that special permit review, it's, the board cannot control hours of operation generally.
Right.
But we're happy to tell you what Peter thinks of the operating times.
Yep.
I'm not for sure, I mean, the grand store opens this Saturday morning, I'm not for sure if this location will be open that early, because of road traffic, it could be open earlier, because a lot of people seem to be on the road before 7:00. So we're really going to have to take it to 6:00. We close at 6:30 in the rain typically. I would say 6:30 typically, I think there'll be some nights that might go long at 6:30, I'm not for sure.
Right, yeah, there was, I think the concern that Drew is speaking to is on a document, I think 11:30 was a, a number that we had seen somewhere, I don't know for sure, but that's...
Go ahead, Dan.
10, right, okay.
It's John First, at 8:00.
But Chair, we don't have the jurisdiction to determine somebody's business hours, do we?
Um, I, well, let me, let me ask Dan to answer that question.
We, it's, it's been our past practice on site plans, that we ask the applicants to put the hours of operation on plans, and it, there is an intention in that, in making sure that there's not adverse hours towards adjacent property owners or whatever else that, so, we do.
Right.
I mean, we didn't put hours on station rail, I know it's in a different...
We did, it was, it was on the site plan, yeah.
So John?
Hey, hey, everybody, my name is John First, I'm an attorney at Catania, Madden Rider, we're conflict counsel, because you're a normal planning board attorney, has a conflict on this application, so I know I missed the last couple of meetings Jonathan had covered for me, but I was here back in, I think it was November. So just to answer the specific question, I mean, there is site plan criteria that do talk about the impacts to the surrounding neighbors, so I, I think you could use that to, to kind of control the hours of operation in general terms, so, you know, I think there is enough there if it's going to impact the neighbors, let's put it that way. So something extremely late would certainly impact the neighbors, but something that's running, you know, till 7, 8 o'clock, you know, obviously wouldn't be as much of an impact due to noise, those type of issues that are still site plan issues under your code. So you do have the ability, if you want to, if it's, you know, if it's an extenuating circumstance with the hours.
I've seen us in, in, in resolution, when there's outdoor entertainment...
Chairman?
Yeah.
I hate to be the enforcer, but this has lasted a lot longer than three minutes.
Yeah.
I see there's a lot of people who may want to speak tonight.
No, thank you for, thank you for mentioning it.
In addition to that, we have a lot more items on the agenda.
We do, thank you.
Compared to the other applicants?
Yep.
Sorry, Drew, but maybe if after, there's more time to talk, we can...
I have, I have a lot more questions.
Okay, so let's, let's allow you to come back, all right? Because the, Rob, one of the issues is that some courtesy was granted, a deadline was missed, and these were, these were submitted actually this afternoon, so I'm trying to...
So Mr. Chairman, one of the things the board could do is they, you know, if they so desire, they could actually close the public hearing for any oral comments, and then provide seven days for people to submit written comments.
Written comments, okay.
So that way, and again, just to go through the outline, so you had a public hearing last month, the applicant did make a supplemental submission in late February, within the deadline, and then they just made another submission tonight, and I think the only change was really moving the dumpster 20 or 30 feet, including the berm, correct? I think those were the only real two changes.
And fixing the lighting fixtures.
And, and fixing the lighting fixtures. So there was only really three small changes made between what was submitted at the deadline in late February, and what was presented tonight.
Okay.
But the board could still, I think it's a good idea maybe to allow a week for written comments.
Very good, all right. Mr. Crane?
That last comment, Bill Crane, 254 Garner Hollow Road, that last comment clarified some things. I don't live anywhere near there, but I'm concerned about mature trees throughout our town, protecting mature trees. It's very, I, I'm glad to hear that the applicant is trying to save more trees, and he plans to save a couple more, that seems to be an additional change, and that's very gratifying to hear. The planting of new trees, to me, we're in a, a global crisis right now, where the whole planet is threatened by global warming, and I think it's incumbent on every town to, to do what they can to, to prevent this, and that, and that means preserving large trees with the large canopies which can give off oxygen and the carbon dioxide, and they all should be doing this. Young trees will take a long time to get up to that point, so it's not like you can just substitute, substitute for trees. So my question is, I don't have a sense, I don't have a definitive idea how many mature trees are going to be cut down, and whether there are some possibilities for saving even more of those, we think. Now, last time we talked about moving the parking sometime across the street, if that is possible to, to save some mature trees. The, also, mature trees provide a lot of wildlife, I kind of have a bit of a loss, and it's, it's not just this project, this project seems very good to me, but it's the, every project we have, I'd say nine out of 10 involves some destruction of trees, so we keep going on this route. We had a question about permeable surfaces, and some requests for permeable surfaces, and I don't, I didn't hear anything, if there's been, you know, what the, what the upshot was of the...
I'll make a note, and we'll address that, yeah.
Is there somebody?
Sir?
Hi, my name is Sal, Sal Thurl, and I wasn't at the last meeting, so I apologize for what I've done, but I just had two questions. One is, is there any legal reason or zoning reason? We have sewer systems, why are they putting a septic down? Like, does, in this day and age, does, is people paying money to have sewers put into the house, and you're talking about a septic? That is my one question. Is there some legal zoning thing, like, why we don't just tap into the sewer systems that already exist in the development right across the street and right behind them that he's buttoned up against? Because they got to be underground somewhere, you know? That's one question. And the, the other thing that I, I wanted to point out, when you were saying that people were taking stuff, trees down in the buffer zones, right? The developments around here, the private communities, as they're so called, were built with buffer zones around them, and the trees die, and that's why they take them down, because I just took one down today, another I saw, because they're woods trees, they're not beautiful maples or canopies, they're trees that grew in the wild, they cleared everything out, and one by one, they've suffocated each other, and they're just dying. So I don't think that was a correct statement, that people were just cutting the trees down. They're cutting them down because they're dead, and they're, it's a safety reason, and they're...
So let me clarify, let me clarify then, because I think you misunderstood what I was saying. So in HOAs, like Dalton Farms, the, and I've got a good source here, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, the HOA is responsible for the buffer areas, all right? And they're not supposed to be mowed, and you're not supposed to interfere with what nature does there, period, whether, whether it dies or not, okay? On your property, you have to ask permission, if you're so many feet away from your home, to plant trees, okay? That's where I live. In the meadows, each property owner is responsible for not encroaching upon the 30-foot buffer, all right? It's different, the opposite of where I live. So in the meadows, the town is, they, they maintain jurisdiction over that 30-foot buffer that spans from the entire length of, of Peter Barton's property, all right, and, and between it and the meadows.
That's town.
So if something dies there...
You're saying the town's responsible for that?
The town, it's the town's jurisdiction, it's not the meadows or property.
Correct, it's not Barton's.
Right, it's town property. And the individual property owners, as far as I understand, are not supposed to mow or interfere with any of the vegetation, fallen or not. Nature is supposed to be permitted to take its course without your interference, okay? So did that sound right? Dan? John?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, so that would be the clarification of what I said. We'll get to that one, yeah. I, I took a note, so some things I'll address now, and some things I'll, I'll do after we close the hearing, okay? All right, thank you.
I, I could just give a quick answer to that. Sir, the owner has a right to choose how he wants to do a sewage system, it's an option he's picking to do a septic. I'm sure he's evaluating whether the cost effectiveness of trying to connect to the existing sewer system, or to use a septic, and what goes into those factors are how many houses, or how many people are going to be using the system, so, but we can't dictate to him, you know, what he should be choosing is, is connection to the sewer system, that, that's a, a landowner's right to, to, to determine what's the best course of action there, as long as it's within the health and safety of the community.
Yeah, I would think that having a septic would be better for the life of the sewer system, and that would be something the town would stress, like, did they import a year into the town, or they have water lines they're running through the town? It just, they have...
We try to leave that up to the engineers, because they're the professionals who are, are ensuring, they're licensed to ensure that safety, and so we, we, we all have our own thoughts of what, what's better or not, but we have to leave it to licensed professionals to, to guide us in that decision.
Thanks, Rob. Is there another person who would like to approach the podium, to be heard? Yeah, uh, okay, all right. Doug, you'll, you'll come after this gentleman, thank you.
All right, William Rowe, Tempeka Road, been up here for about four years. Main question is, is there anything on this that's illegal or anything at all that doesn't be code, setbacks, state law, town code, whatever? Any?
I believe it's zoning compliant.
So it's illegal to pull it?
So, yeah, so it absolutely is a legal submission. We're, we're merely here to discuss site plan, we're not here to dispute whether this can take place or not.
Okay, but it's not...
The, the, no, well, the, the...
No, the building inspector, I think, I don't know if the building inspector had reviewed this, all right, so she did not indicate any need for any variances, so, and I didn't see any based upon my review, I don't think Dan didn't pick up any either, so it's zoning compliant, it's permitted use, and as the chairman said, this is a site plan review, so there are, you know, five or six criteria that the planning board looks at when they analyze a site plan review, and a lot of it is just figuring out the layout, where things go, how things work.
So legality is good?
It is, yeah. I mean, it was an R45 zone residence, Mr. Barton had districted into his farm, right? We'll start from there, there was stuff that happened prior, but that's unnecessary to discuss right now.
Right, now it's an agricultural district.
It's agricultural use, permitted in our 45 zone in our town, and then there's also a, a state agency called... And then there's also a state agency called Agomarkets, New York State Agomarkets, that protects farmers' right to market and sell what they produce on their farms. And it can also come in from other farms as well. Because there's a lot of peaks and valleys in what they produce, depending on the season and that sort of thing.
Second question is, I'm going to step out. Is there anything being done to remediate this? Because I took a walk down here today. This is non-existent. This buffer is not there.
Well, right. So in the red, the red is the homeowner's side of Mr. Barton's right property. And that was what I was talking about, all right? That really should not have been mowed or landscaped. It should have been left.
Because here, you know, he has to plant trees, this, that. I don't think there's anyone doing anything on that side of the boundary to bring it back to where it should be.
So that's a zone or it's a compliance issue that the building inspector is working on and I'm working with her, again, because there's a conflict with your town attorney, with Mr. Barton. So the building inspector has, we have investigated, we've looked at it, and, you know, she's responding.
Okay, what do you think the outcome would be? They have planted trees back there also?
I have talked to the building inspector about the specifics, but I know she will be, you know, reaching out to the neighbors and just kind of, you know, educating them.
Wayne, I don't, I don't think the proposed trees are going to be planted in that buffer.
No, I understand that Pete proposing, but what I'm asking is what's being done to fix what was already damaged.
Right, and so that's jurisdiction of the building inspector and she's on it.
Now, that doesn't fall under D E C or anything like that?
No.
Strictly in-house?
Correct. There's a conservation easement and the town has the ability to enforce it.
Okay, so it's back to the town.
Correct. You're talking about the red area, right?
Yes, the red area.
Yeah, exactly. Yep. Thank you. Doug?
Hi, I'm Doug McConnell. I live at 23 Green Street. And I have some questions. Is there going to be another opening?
We're not, we're not at that point of decision-making yet, all right?
No, just because we got, had no time to digest.
Okay. If we choose to close it this evening, all right, that's up to the board to decide via vote. You will have, as the attorney suggested, you can submit comments to us for a week out from today.
Same stuff.
Right.
I just want to make one point regarding the EV station. And I do appreciate the dumpster being moved. I'm in a different position than Drew. My property elevation is probably 15 feet, 14 feet higher. And my second floor greenhouse is another 15 feet. There couldn't have been a tree there for 30, 40 years. And I'm still looking over onto the cars, parking EV station and the dumpster and the buildings. So, I mean, that's what I see when I get up in the morning. Look at the window. I don't see the residential box yard. I see, you know, three things I said at the end of the day. Market, donut factory, dumpster and problems. And that's my primary concern. Getting back to, and I didn't hear much on it from back there. The timer, how, when is this going to be operational? Six o'clock in the morning, 10:00. In the wintertime, that means lights are going to be on all day and all night. And again, I'm at an elevation where I'm going to see that light. And now since those trees have been cut down across on that property, I look out and I see a big bright light with flags.
Let me just clarify a couple of points that you've made. The trees that were cut on the side yard, okay? That would be, if you're in the old driveway that comes into the property to the right, that's where a rain garden, right, is going to be placed in that area, okay? For all the groundwater. Now, that, those would have had to have come down anyway. I haven't seen any other trees in the side yard that have been removed prematurely, all right?
But right now I can see the light.
Now, now to that.
And now that's all I see from my first floor and my second.
Now, to that point, another significant change that occurred on these plans is the movement of light. The large 14-foot lights. I can't tell you exactly where they're going to be right now, but a very, a very big effort is being made to push those away to the other side of the property. And shields will be placed on other lights to block the glare. Did I misspeak, Joe? No? Okay.
But it's not even the glare. It's nighttime dark and there's going to be light. So in the wintertime, that's going to be lit all morning and all night.
Understood. Understood, Doug. But, you know, headlights are something we're going to have to deal with, unfortunately. Yeah. And I'm sure the lights will be put on a timer. I mean, it just makes sense because, you know, just to save money and that sort of thing. But we'll dig into that. I'm going to, I'll make some notes and I'll ask.
I'm so concerned about the amount of trucks that are coming to and fro. I mean, today, I'm way further, but I do have a truck that's up the hill to the farm.
Right.
And I'm one of the small oil vehicles that come down back and forth. I see them coming in. But every day, I see little big balloons coming in, UPS, whatever. And this is going to be closer down because they're going to have the loading stations in there. So that's mine.
All right.
And I think that's it. Again, if we haven't had a meeting, the plans are less, the post-home meetings are usually.
So just to, I understand your frustration with that. There was a lot of conversation that happened since the last meeting and this meeting to try to move this project along. So that's why the plans were submitted this afternoon. Because time was needed to put the changes in place in preparation for this meeting.
Right. And again, just to emphasize, there was only like three or four changes since, that are different from the plans that were submitted the end of February.
Right. Right.
But we wouldn't have known what was happening, what did happen that was requested.
It was just information taken from a public hearing.
You're referring to the 10 points, right?
From the last meeting.
From the last meeting, right. So the blacktop walk was changed to concrete on here. Parking was taken away from the front of the building and put over the septic and towards the throat of the entrance. Okay, that's another big one. The dumpster was moved from 84 feet, from his, 82 feet from his property line now. 130, 132 feet. So from Drew's backyard, back door, it's two-thirds of a football field, about 70-something yards. Your way up on the hill or, no, here.
Right, but we're riding it to 10 feet, 30 feet higher than Drew's.
So another change, all right, is there's a burn, okay? Plus a fence on top of the burn. Now, our primary concern isn't necessarily your view. It's more from the street, okay? And, you know, a concern of ours was to see that dumpster from the street. Now, where he put it now is pushed towards the back and left and it's on a bias. I have a question to ask at the end, all right? Or just a suggestion that may or may not be of interest, but I'm going to mention it later. What else, what else did you? Okay, so the other changes that have occurred here is some trees have been moved, all right? And you can see where they are now. They will help, they will help block that dumpster from your view and from Drew's and Beth's, all right? There's a few trees there.
But they're coming down from 30 feet.
Understood, yeah. We can only, we can only make so many improvements and changes under.
The major investment in my life is in the house that I have there.
I understand.
And I opened up the windows in the morning, pulled the shades up or whatever, and I was looking at residential homesite.
Understood.
Now I'm looking at a very commercialized homesite. And God knows where it's going to go. We have to discuss that. What's going to happen after, you know, where the van's going to migrate down there? Paddy is going to migrate down there and it's going to be, you know? I can't say.
If you'll just put some of those items in an email and send them to Colleen. She'll distribute them to the board. And we're going to have additional conversations about site plan after this, so.
Let me turn to your time.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Tom Mullins. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Just to adjust some of the questions here. Those that drive up to Oakway Road, we see our common area where our Roosevelt House is in the pool area is very, very well lit. Not much further from these homes and the meadows, we do have this section of town. Prior to installing the lights, and it's a very well-lit parking lot, we use a lower height light. And we have never had a complaint from any of the residents in Dalton overlooking what is a very, very well-lit parking lot. The septic issue as far as sewer, I don't think a lot of people realize how the Duchess County Water Farm is situated. There's no access to sewer lines anywhere on any public road. All the sewer lines sit within private areas. For instance, if the development of 55 were to happen, they would have to access Dalton Farm proper in order to connect. So it would be very unlikely for any property to hook into anything close to Dalton Farm common area. As far as the buffers, that's been a big issue in private communities. When Dalton was first built, contractors extended into what should have been common area. So whoever was in charge of the planning board or the town at that time, inspectors, did not enforce the encroachment into what should have been woods and natural foliage. We've done great studies within Dalton and we're not preventing people from expanding into areas that they don't own. So similar to what we talk about here, if people were to encroach to what should have been a natural area, we would make them put it back. We would take litigation to have them put it back. The new site plan is not intrusive at all. I liaised on the planning boards when I was in the police department. We had a farm market put within Hartsdale. It was a smaller area and it expanded maybe three or four times the size. It's surrounded by homes. It's a far larger business with a higher volume than what this would be. And we've never had an issue of homeowners feeling encroached upon. There's also a big one in East Chester and the Scarsdale border. It's probably about eight times the size of what Barton's proposal is. It's surrounded by houses that are worth $3 million or $4 million each. There, again, there's the no encroachment and really traffic is not an issue because it's sporadic as this would be. This would probably be the least intrusive with sporadic traffic. To patronize a bakery, coffee shop in the course of the day. Far less intrusive than you see Dunkin' Donuts coming in farms.
Right.
So I think it's a great proposal. I don't think lighting's an issue. I think if the proper buffer on the residential end was never displaced, it wouldn't be so much of an issue. And I think the issue of a septic, that's about the only option anybody would have because you just can't encroach on the sewer system. So I thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there another ma'am? Yes, Beth. Yep.
Hi.
Hi, Beth.
I'm on St. Luke Street. Well, my whole speech has kind of off the table now since we just got these new plans and we haven't had a chance to review them. I feel like that was definitely a calculated move because we asked the board, I'm sorry, we asked the town for the revised site plan eight days ago. We received them seven days ago and now this is completely different. It's not completely different. It has a lot of the things that they've had last time.
So Beth, I just don't want you to think that it was done intentionally, all right?
It feels that way.
It might. It might feel that way, but I'm.
Because this is supposed to be a.
Let's say there was some reluctance.
Review park. Is it really present here?
So there was maybe some reluctance, but then we had, we had a meeting and there was some conversation and compromises and.
Thank you.
That's, I don't want you to think that anything was done spitefully.
To these plans that, you know, probably will have more, I will, you know, be addressing those in email or however I'm supposed to do that. But I actually don't see the fence on these plans. Can you show me where it shows?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just.
Joe's going to show you. Yep.
Then is it specified how tall the trees are going to be when they're planted?
We haven't gotten to that point yet. But I'll make a note because we will be discussing that.
Okay. And just one more thing I just want to say. There's never been an issue about the legality. That's not anything that we're fighting.
No.
What we're trying to do is just get the proper accommodations for the residents that have been residents there. And according to town code, all of that stuff is actually at the discretion of the board. The board is, this is why you guys are here. This is why we're all here.
Right.
Is to make sure that things are done right at the minimal disruption to the existing residents.
And just to, you know, I don't like misspeaking. I wouldn't know whether this was legal or not. Let's just say some things were done prematurely, okay? And I'll leave that there, okay? All right? As far as crimes committed, no. No, no crimes yet. Not yet, all right? Okay. So. Is there anybody else? I believe there's another one. Victoria, did you want to speak?
Oh, you can answer.
Okay. There was another woman that raised her hand and, okay. Thank you.
My name is Amy Moore. Thank you very much for saving the seat for me. Because last time I slept most of the time, I still have my boot on. I live at 56 Reynolds Road and I just have two questions. How many EV stations do we end up with at the market?
I counted seven on these plans. Is that right, Joe? But I thought there were eight before. There's eight. Okay, eight.
And how many of those, how many EV stations are up at the farm?
None right now. So all that's been installed are conduit and a panel, all right? There's transformers and a pole. And these are also going to be, I believe, and Joe can correct me or Victoria, they're going to be cross-used for regular parking and for electric vehicle charge stations. Maybe I'm speaking prematurely. Am I?
You're speaking of the market?
Yeah, I think your question is up on the main farm, there's no EV stations where you park for the main farm.
I misunderstood you.
Correct?
So I'm just wondering why this market, which is for people to come have coffee for an hour and a donut versus people that go to the farm that are there for multiple hours, there's nothing there, but there's a requirement to have seven at the market? So that's my question.
So if I can kind of, in my mind, I have the same question and I mulled it over. We're here to help farmers market and sell their products, all right? I'm not thrilled about the location, all right? That's me personally. I don't know about the other board members. But the purpose of these electric vehicle charge stations is, in an application like this, would be the same as the application we approved at the grocery store. And you'll be seeing those come in. It attracts people who have electric cars, to park their cars, hook them up, and it takes time for them to reach capacity. Often, depending on whether it's high-capacity or lower-capacity chargers, it takes longer or less time. But it keeps the customer in the business. He's, I believe, one of the plans is to have an internet cafe as well. He's, I believe, one of the plans is to have an internet cafe, as well as tables for having coffee and pastry. So these people will be shopping and spending money and buying the market's products while their vehicles are being charged. So there's an indirect connection or direct.
Is that different than the Knoxon Road venue that doesn't, I don't believe that has some air?
This is an expansion of that.
Okay.
You can answer that question.
Okay, I just, I go by there all the time. I haven't seen them. I haven't seen them. They could be super busy, so maybe I'm not that concerned that it'll be super busy over here either.
Our code actually hasn't caught up to, you know, I don't wanna say code, but the ones you'll see in the stop and shop are gonna have some monitors for static advertisements and things like that. It didn't meet our sign code. So it's a new technology. Maybe Jason, is there anything you wanna add? This is your industry, isn't it? He loves when I'm on the spot like that, by the way, and I do it directly and bluntly.
Yeah, no, that's, you pretty much know that.
See, I thought I wasn't gonna get more than a few sentences, a few words out of him.
My next question is, and I know this is probably out of the scope of this, but by not knowing what the hours of operation are, when I first went to this meeting when it was over at the Rec, however long ago, it was presented as a farm market and bar. Has that been changed?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna... So there has been some suggestions of a cidery, all right? I don't know whether, would the applicant be interested in speaking about alcohol, spirits and that sort of thing at this time? But if, as a farmer who grows apples and sells cider, he can ferment that and sell hard cider, all right? Because that would help him produce the money he needs to keep his farm running.
I love cider.
Yeah. But as far as alcohol, I'll let the applicant, whoever would like to answer that question. I think it's one that deserves answering now.
Yeah, cider, cider is not one per se, so, you know, it's just cider. Are we talking, I know up at the farm, there's wine and other things. Because my point is that we don't know the exact hours of this. So they get the approval, they have the liquor license up at the farm, so I'm assuming that's the same, it's all encompassing. And the next thing you know, we're running a bar, and it looks like big dogs when you drive by at nine o'clock at night. So that's, that was my question.
What we don't.
I'm afraid that we're approving something without all of the information of what we're actually approving. That was my question. And then just a comment that I wanted to make. This has become a complete, excuse my language, shitshow on social media, and I just wanna publicly express that it's very disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the podium and talk? Andrea? Would you like to approach? Yeah, but you're talking in class. I don't know. I think you should approach. I was picturing this guy with a tattoo, like a bulldog on his arm, eating a cider donut, all right? That's what I was picturing. So. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the podium this evening? No?
Thank, so thank you, everyone, for the comments. I do wanna reiterate that there was no intent to hide the ball here. The applicant was simply trying to be responsive to comments made and then be more responsive after some people suggested we were not responsive enough. So again, no intention to hide the ball, and we would not object to closing the hearing tonight, but allow for written comments for a period of seven days in case people need some more time to really go through other changes. So a question came up about some work on the property, and again, for the record, I just wanna reiterate that there was, Mr. Barton did have electrical permits for work, for the electric work done on the property. It's neither here nor there because you're reviewing the totality of the site plan, but I want the public to know that work was not done without permits. I also quickly wanna address the scope of site plan approval. You know, I disagree. I don't think the board is within jurisdiction to arbitrarily choose hours of operation for a business. If you want to say you have to operate within the noise, you know, periods of noise, or you can't operate past 10 or 11, you know, perhaps we will consider that. But to say that we have to stop operating at 6:30 or 7:00, really is an unreasonable restriction on the business, and it's just not within the board's scope of review for a site plan. Again, it's not a special permit. It is a site plan. The private sewer issue, I think, was already addressed. It's a private sewer, and we don't have a right to hook up to it. I also wanna address the concept of what the planning board is reviewing. You know, your job is to review a site plan to make sure that it complies with the zoning law and that it's not gonna adversely affect the community. It's really not about one particular neighbor's view from his second-floor window. We still have rights in America, but we don't have the right not to see light or noise from other people. This is permitted under the zoning law, and when I look out my second-floor window, I see garbage cans, I see my neighbor's lights, I see junk car, right? We don't get to control what other people do with their property if that property is being used legally. And so I know it'll be a big change to see some light, but presumably when it was a single-family home, there were lights on at night as well. I mean, there's always lights on in buildings. A question came up about the height of trees. There are heights on these plans. The sugar maple is proposed to be six to seven feet tall at time of planting, and the Norway spruces are six to eight feet tall at time of planting. I know some members of the board might want something a little higher, but I do ask that you balance that with the cost of taller plants. There's a significantly increased cost to transport these plants, get them from fuel and nurseries, and they are more expensive to plant. I think we had an estimate that a twelve-foot tree would cost a thousand dollars just to plant because you have to dig such a big hole. So we ask that you consider that this is an aduse, and again, you use your reasonableness standards. Last thing about the EV parking. Many communities are requiring EV parking for all new site plans. The adopters are saying, you know, this is something we really want in our community. So I think that the applicant is taking a very good step here towards something that's going to become the norm moving forward. I know we're not here yet in this community. It's not a requirement, but it probably will be in the next 10 years. So, you know, I think, I think everyone should support the EV charging restrictions. Nope, just wanna thank you, and I'll stay here when you guys talk through your site plans.
Yep.
I would just, I would just add, because I was discussing the hours of operation before as well, that the first iteration of the plans, maybe it was the second iteration, did show some hours. And we do always request those, and 155-59-E1BB provides for miscellaneous information that's required on the site plan application. It says, "Application shall also contain such other blah, 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 or impact considerations as the planning board may deem necessary." So if the planning board deems hours of operations next to a residential property necessary, it has been common practice in the town to put the hours of operations on plans, also in the resolutions of the approval.
I understand. I'm just saying, if we're going to do that, then we're gonna choose broader hours because we're not going to want to be trapped into something that's not gonna work for the business.
Right, and just to jump on that also, one of the site plan criteria talks about protection of adjacent or neighboring properties against noise, glare, unsightliness, or other objectional features. So I think, you know, certainly when you talk about the noise as opposed to what you get later, you know, I think that would probably give the board some authority to kinda control some of the late-night stuff.
Oh, we were just commenting that, you know, a lot of the other restaurants and businesses in the town, they open past 6:30, so.
Yes. I think, you know, we're not talking about restricting him to the point where it's going to impede his ability to operate. I know that, you know, when it comes to outdoor venues and things, on the agenda tonight is Station Grill. It's gonna be putting a tent, you know, in the back, that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the kinda thing you really want, you know, to pay attention to, so.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll discuss the hours of operations amongst us after the hearing and in future meetings together, all right?
Hopefully not to many future meetings.
Hopefully. We could have, all right, I'm not gonna go there. I wanna zip it.
You know, it's a question.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second.
Just to clarify, so you're closing the oral comments and then keeping it open with respect to written comments for, say, next Friday at 12 o'clock?
You wanna put a seven or a 10-day?
Yeah, I would say a week from now. I would say next Friday at, you know, 12 o'clock, or close the business next Friday.
Okay. Okay, and the town's closed on Fridays.
They can get emails though.
Right. But then they will get distributed to us.
Make it Monday.
Yeah, okay.
Monday, the, what is that? I turned my phone off so it wouldn't ring.
27th, is it?
By email, to Colleen, what's?
Colleen Hayes. Colleen Hayes is the building depart, with the building clerk.
So on the website, the Beekman website?
Tell you what the...
And you could ask her to then distribute it to the board members, the planning board members. Okay, yeah. March?
It's buildingclerk@townofbeekmanny.us, and you can also get it from the town's website.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'm sorry. So there was a motion to close the public hearing with respect to oral comments, however allowing written comments up until March 27.
Okay, what he said, all right, do I have?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the public hearing now is officially closed, and thank you. Thank you for coming. And I'd like to request a brief moment to use the facilities. Let's not continue discussion with them.
What's that?
Smiles, no smiles, no, yeah, how was it? Janice is smiling, so everything's okay, all right. Let's see if we can keep the smiles now, all right? We have a hole in the ship.
Yeah, we should be back.
Okay, all right. Okay. Let's open up the plans here again, and let's discuss what we need to see so that the applicant can make whatever changes are necessary based on what we've heard and what you've seen as board members. Anybody have any thoughts?
Yeah, I got a couple of thoughts.
Peter?
Again, you got the pointer right.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, you need.
I'd like to suggest that this area, this curve here, be taken out and run straight, in a straight line up to the corner of the walkway. All right, and if the six parking spaces that are against this walkway are eliminated, then you'd be able to take the whole, the electrical charging stations and the area to the loading dock, you'd be able to shift it 12 feet closer to the building. Also, from, I don't know, I don't know what the deliveries are.
Yeah, makes sense.
I don't know whether there's straight truck deliveries or trailer deliveries, but if this area is straightened out, it will certainly make it a lot easier to access the loading area with a truck and, with a straight truck and/or a trailer. And if we, if the electrical charging is moved 12 feet closer to the building because of the elimination of the, those six parking spaces, then of course it's 12 feet further away from the property.
Joe, Pete, do you wanna talk about that at all? Comment, please.
I mean, I totally agree with Tom, straightening that out because of the curve that's there. The parking spots that are, that Peter's suggesting that we go to, I mean, that would be a couple employee parking spots. Because other than that, then the employees are gonna be parking out, way out, actually. We've already taken parking spots off of this site plan from the first, second, first and second rendition. So I don't see where we can lose any more spots with this.
Pete, if, if that was used, gonna be used for employee parking, what if, if you eliminate them, eliminated where they are right now and move them on the, I guess it's the south side, but adjacent to where the electrical parking would be?
So you're saying, Peter, to have a whole line of parking spots there now, or?
Well, yeah, that's what it, that's what it would be in eliminating that curve.
So, but, all right, I just wanna clarify because I'm a little confused myself. You talked about, oh, so you're talking about moving those with the electric vehicle charge stations 12 feet in? And then adding a few more, is that?
If I may, the problem with moving those six over to this outside, now you're having headlights pointing directly toward neighbors, and we put those cars there to avoid that. So you're actually shifting the parking lot 12, 15 feet. It's not that much of visual impact.
But it'd be, it'd be easier as a truck driver to back up.
No, that needs, that needs to drop curves, so, because of that curve, so you can have those cars parked.
I was wondering why you changed their orientation.
We changed the orientation to basically mistreese, cut trees on. Would be easier to make that more straight, yes, but we do some of the larger trees.
Well, I mean, that would have been a nice point to mention during the hearing that you, that you changed the orientation so that the headlights were not, you know, heading towards their home. That's what I'm, you know, I meant to ask what caused you to change them.
No, they're always there. That was our original design.
Okay, I remember them. I thought they were straighter and in line at one point on one plan.
No, we're talking about the six are down on the north side.
Oh, the north side, okay.
They were always there, so to move them to the south side would redirect. The EV stations always there, we oriented those changes to minimize trees, which I think I did mention that we did, we removed some of the trees. The six to the north are always there, we didn't change them.
But if you took, if you took them out and put a fence up, you'd kill the headlights.
Or are you putting a fence up?
So.
Yeah.
If you...
If you just extended fence, we're already talking about putting a fence in at the EV stations.
Were you wanting to fence?
Now, so if I can ask Pete, Peter Poltrak, what does that do for you? Those, moving those six spots, the ones by the loading zone? I need to just get on the same page with you.
It makes the access to the loading area smoother.
Oh, so you're looking at it from his point of view, to benefit?
I'm looking at it from the point of view that I'm driving a truck.
Oh, I see, okay.
And whether I come in, whether I'm coming in with a straight truck or a delivery van or whatever. As it is now, if I come in with my delivery van, I'm worried I have to be cognizant of what's in the parking area on both sides of me, on the right side and on the left-hand side of me.
I see.
And if I eliminate those and shift those to another location, then I'm also shifting, I can also shift the electrical charging parking twelve, basically 12 feet closer, or whatever the dimension is on, uh, for a parking spot, closer to the, uh, closer to the building and further away from the property line.
You could also probably gain some more parking up near the throat there.
You can, and we could.
If you need, if you needed to.
But we did, we, I, I circled around each one of the trees we said, and you know it's more than just a symbol. It's an approach area, and then we drew the parking lot to avoid that. So if I take that six, those six spaces and eliminate them, and we locate them elsewhere, how many trees are you willing to have us lose to make that change?
I don't think you're going to lose any.
You will, and I would guarantee you that.
I guarantee you won't.
I spent over 40 hours on this layout, much longer than you have, and I know what I have to work this.
You've spent your 40 hours and I've spent time down there looking at things also.
I'll talk to you about that when we get to the order, and we'll give you, make those changes. But so when I come back with the changes and the trees are gone, I'll look at these.
Where, where are you suggesting, Peter, the six spots?
And also, the parking can buy, so unless there's a significant reason to change the parking, we want to.
Like a soul, and be able to.
So we, we were just talking, so take the EV, the four EVs that are at a diagonal, and we could straighten that out, which they were originally, with the fence still there with the berm that we're talking about, and that would make more of a straight. What Peter's talking about is that it, it will make more straight access back to the loading dock, so I don't think we lose any trees right there.
You're not going to lose, I don't think you're going to lose any.
He's also saying you slide them 18 feet this way, you know, the depth of the parking space that you'd be getting rid of on that side.
No, he wants to move them this way. So basically, this whole thing has to change with these parking locations. This whole thing has to change. Yes, and you come straight through.
But we can't, we, if we lose those spots, where are we putting those spots?
I'm not going out here, that goes, that goes, that goes, that goes, that's true.
You know, I, so can I ask a question? Is anything right there violating anything right now? He said it's fine, this would be like a 40-foot render.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not about violations, no. We're doing, we're doing site plan.
There are laws, um.
We're discussing, we're having discussions, yeah.
We certainly can look into it, too. I just want to make sure or understand there may be.
So which trees would you have to lose, Joe?
There's possibly a few.
Where? I don't even know, because I, I've lost track of, uh, of where we are on the plans. I, but I understood that this was more for your benefit, i- if, you know.
Moving this, this way.
Joe, so if, if there isn't a benefit to you, that he's.
No, there's no benefit to us.
No, oh, all right.
There's, there's a benefit for, we're asking.
Can you affirm that the loading is going to be fine? It's a, you know, just.
I, I put a curve on there, it's trucks being in the business. But if you want to change, we could certainly do that.
That's just one number.
Here, no trees repaired. By moving these forwards here and adding more spaces here, that probably does. By adding, we need that pole, so even if I straighten this out and move it this way with three or four more, that one would probably go.
Well, I don't think we're worried, we're not really worried about.
I thought you were actually commenting, Peter, wishes of being the front open towards the.
That's why I was trying to.
Yeah, Peter, you realize, he, last meeting you made a comment that you want it open to the building from the road. If you're going to be extending parking spots up this way, that's going to now start closing in and obscuring all the.
Because when you go over there and look at it, where the, where the driveway enters Beekman Polkway Road, that's where you're going to put your one up, the existing driveway to the house.
That's over here?
Yeah, around there.
All right.
I'll show you where the existing driveway is. The existing driveway pretty much comes up around here, it's coming through here, right, and up through here.
And you get that, you get down in that corner and you're talking about putting a water garden down in that corner, correct?
I mean, garden?
We, we haven't finally designed that, so I can't, we're trying to avoid country, so we may get some other alternatives, but that's not.
Okay, a water garden, and what you're doing is your concern is about drainage, and when you're going to start excavating, you create whatever you are for that water garden and to direct the drainage down to that area, you're going to interrupt those trees.
So let me, so Pete, your, your purpose was to see if you could help them with access in and out? Just to clarify? Was that your function by pointing it out?
Basically, yes, the access to the loading area, to the dumpster, also, as I said repeatedly, to move the electric vehicle charging stations further away from the property line, in other words, closer to the building.
So, so let's, let's.
You do that simply because you're going to take those parking spots, whatever it is, 12 foot deep.
So that would be, that would be, uh, say, a community issue, right, for lack of better words, so is there any chance of that happening?
So I, I guess before we get there, what's the objection to the EV parking spaces? Because they don't make, they don't make noise as far as I know.
It's, it's, yeah, I don't think it's as, what would be the objection? Is there an objection? I mean, it's a good question, really. I mean, uh, how do you just, uh?
But there's going to be a fence, they won't see them.
The fact that it's in close proximity, there's going to be a fence. I mean, I, all right, so.
Peter?
He wants to hear, he wants that moved up here.
So you're saying, get rid of this, move this back.
All the way up.
Not all the way up.
Well, up to the same amount that you were.
So that way the truck would be able to come back like this, but then you would have a line of parking like this.
Right, which would go all the way down to here and remove that tree, possibly that tree, possibly that tree.
And I disagree with you, Ren, if you're on the tree for a minute.
Well, it would prevent us from planting the additional trees, for sure.
So to answer your question, Victoria, um, it, the, you know, the, the public was, was upset, right?
His specific objection.
Yeah, I know, no, no, I'm talking about you, you, your question about the electric vehicle charge stations, what's the issue with them? I think the, the fact that, you know, the panel's in place and, uh, and all the electric is in place is, is part of the issue, right? Because the consideration would have been maybe to push it on the other side of the building, and that might have pleased the public, uh, more about their location and the light that they require, um, during the day. So that, but it, we're not really going to be looking at that right now, okay, because that's a lot to ask. I think what he's trying to do is in part help Pete, if he's interested, in the, the traffic flow. Joe is an engineer, he feels it's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, the EV stations, I, Board, what do you think? I mean, is there really much of an impact, uh, a change in the impact that they're going to have by moving them 12 feet in? Pete, what's your thought? 12 feet, we're talking about.
But who would have to be teaching, because that's the end of the parking space.
Yeah, so.
But you're going to have more spots. Those six spots that are next to the building are going to be moved closer to the neighbors now, right, in that scenario.
It would remove the trees.
Right, and it would cause more disturbance closer to the neighbors, and potentially remove trees, we don't know for sure, but.
I don't think.
I've got a feeling, I'm only coming back there with the disturbance, so please.
But it would prevent the trees you're planting.
And, and the EV stations are sedentary. They, they, they don't make noise, the cars don't make noise, and, you know, it probably won't be used all the time, I don't know, but I don't see where, it's not like cars that, that are coming and going constantly, they'll be there for a while.
I don't think, say, moving, putting parking adjacent to where the, uh, charging stations are now?
Yep.
I don't think that that's going to have any impact at all on the, on, uh, either one of the adjoining neighbors that are at that part of the property.
So, let's just stay on that, on that thought here, all right? I, I took some pictures, and I think if, if we just talk about this one thing here, all right, this, this shot, all right? Pete, maybe you can take this and show your engineer. This is where we need more, you, I know that's where the berm is going to go, right? This is, that's the panel here, right? And you got four here and four there, this big void back here. Some trees, just some, I know you're putting the berm back there and there's going to be a fence. It, I'm thinking trees from here and over that way, and I'm not talking about a dozen. I'm talking about some evergreens, because there, there aren't any evergreens there. Well, it, so as far as requirements are concerned, we're responsible for, uh, the view shed from public areas, okay? This is something we're looking at from Beekman Polkway Road, and it, it, we are here, it is within our scope, you know, to, uh, protect the view shed. So all I'm suggesting is behind that, you've got the berm, you've got the fence, some evergreens back.
Can I just say, the view shed is all of Beekman Polkway Road? So we have a brand new house that's right up here, right on the right-hand side.
Let's just, Pete, if you don't mind.
But there's not a tree in that yard.
This is commercial use, let's just talk about commercial use and your property.
A hundred-foot buffer goes this whole length of the road, right?
I, I really only want to talk about this project.
Well.
Okay, now, what, what is your?
I drive around and I see developments in this town everywhere, and I see hardly any trees planted in these residential developments. So I drive up a road for the past 40 years, and all of a sudden I look over and I see all these homes there, and there's no plantings there.
Apples and oranges.
I don't think it's apples and oranges, actually, no. I think it's very.
Two different applications.
I think it's very basic that, I'm looking at a house right up here, I drive by now, and it's a wide-open front lawn. So if there's a hundred-foot buffer there, then I'd like to know how that happened. I guess I'm asking a.
All right, now, just so that we stay on point, we're not, we, we do not review residential construction except for subdivisions. We're here to talk about your project, commercial application.
So who would enforce that hundred-foot buffer there, then? I guess that's my question.
All right, market, agricultural use, right. So, uh, that's, that's, that's our job here, so I really don't want to go into all that, it's a waste of time. Let's just focus on this project, okay?
So I think the suggestion was just to add a few, a couple of trees?
Yeah, just, just to add some evergreens behind the electric vehicle charge station. Now, Pete, Victoria, I just want clarification now, while John is here, while Dan is here, all right? I went to the building department, and I tried to skirt the issue, okay, and I think I did a really good job of it. But I was told very clearly that the permit was recalled, okay, for the, uh, it, the, the documents are there, unless they misspoke. I'm sure you, so I said recall, you were issued a permit.
Let's not talk about the permit, because I think the work is done with permits.
Yeah, well, no, what I'm saying is that the, the, the permit was issued, but then it was recalled. So you, you had a permit, and then it was recalled. Now, why am I bringing it up? I'm not looking to discuss that issue for any reason other than we're being, we're being, ask Colleen. So Pete, let me just say something. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get into that, because it's not important to me, all right?
But so they were saying, you're calling me up and saying that I have something.
All right, all right, you, you do your homework and check with Colleen, and she'll explain the timeline of that, all right? The way I understood it is that you, you needed to get that project done because you had a grant, right? And the grant was going to expire, is that true? So you went ahead and you did the electrical work when an Article 78 was in place, okay? The way, the way I remember it, and don't, I could be wrong, all right? Ephraim granted you the permit because it was going to be for the house, because the house wasn't electrified, okay? And now, uh, I'm learning, okay, that it wasn't for the house, it was actually for the electric vehicle charge stations. No, let me finish. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I don't know what you're talking about.
No, all right, so.
Six hundred amp, go to six hundred amp service.
Okay.
That's in the pedestal, by the way, that, that followed the lines of that house for the last 50 years, so we follow the lines, 100 amp, clean pedestal.
Yes.
Pedestal feeds that house.
Okay.
The house is being fed through the pedestal.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, that, that's a building department issue?
Yeah.
So let's just focus on the site plan, we had, Peter had one comment, you had another comment about adding more trees.
I, I want to make sure that I didn't misspeak publicly, because I was asked if everything was done. But I was very clearly told by the building department that that permit was revoked, that's all. So why am I bringing it up? Good, all right, but I'm telling you what I was told, all right? So I'm speaking about this now.
I was looking over the other day, you saw the permit, it expires again.
No, I haven't, I haven't seen it. Yeah, I never saw it, actually. But it doesn't matter, it really doesn't matter.
I think we need to talk, let's listen to the attorney's advice.
So I would, if any other board members have any other comments or?
So, here's the.
On the site plan?
All right, so the si- it's relevant to the site plan, isn't it? Because, Joe, the reason I'm mentioning it is you, you indicated that the electric vehicle charge stations could only be so far away from that panel, right? And it was put in place before site plan approval took place.
Chairman, we always look at site constraints, whether it's wetland, a tree, an existing electrical panel.
I'm not, I'm not, let me get to my point. Please, I appreciate, you know, just a little, a little courtesy and get to my point, which is, Jennifer, I'm trying to be respectful, okay? Yeah, here we go again, okay? You're being very distracting, and I appreciate if you stop, okay? Now, we're asking for a few evergreens behind the electric vehicle charge stations. I feel we're being accommodating, okay, under the circumstances.
And I had asked whether you wanted staggered trees or like a row of evergreen bushes behind the fence? That was the question.
What was the question? I said, we're asking for evergreens. Can, can, Pete, are you willing to put evergreens?
Right, and I had asked.
Staggered will break it, will break it up.
So yes or no?
I think that's what you want.
Yes or no, answer. I'm looking for evergreens.
Right, she's asking as far as the layout of the evergreens.
Oh, you want us to design them?
I'm not asking you to design them, I'm asking what you're requesting.
We want it to be, we want it to be a natural-looking buffer, whatever, a, a landscaping professional would know what that means. So, yes, stagger, the answer's yes, stagger.
Got it.
So.
Simple, simple question.
I could put a couple over there, and I would put more where my neighbors plant some trees in that 30-foot buffer, but I could put a couple there.
So would you create five more staggered evergreens right behind that, in the.
Correct, that's what they're asking for, to block the panel.
Chairman, can I ask a question now?
Please.
All right, Joe, would you please show on the, on the, on the map where, where are your proposing trees now? Yeah, according to the current plan.
Right here, 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 here. So to block this, to block this view here, because the fence is in between here. This was to add to the fence, just to add a little bit more, since that's in the direction of it. Alice was this way, so we moved it. So the planning board chair has asked, and Mr. Burton agrees to put some more, and that would be in this direction.
Is that where it is? I thought it was in the gap between the two.
Yeah, there's a gap right there.
Yeah, isn't this the gap?
No, he was looking, well, I saw that picture, that was the pole, that's where that's.
This is.
To the left of the pedestal. So you're looking, you're looking.
Should have avoided.
Yeah, I know where that void is, so that's why I'm.
That's, that's good, thank you.
There is a void over there, I'm prepared with that.
That, that answers my question, thank you.
Is that the old foundation?
Well, try.
Which, what, which way does the foundation go?
Foundation is in a generally northeast-southwest. So it would be here, I would try to put it on the higher sides and get more elevation.
Oh, and where's the berm going?
The berm is right, right below the fence, right here.
Okay, so applicant is proposing, what, three trees, three evergreen trees in that vertical gap?
Right, that's what you have there, yes.
Well, that's what, that's what's being requested.
The number, the number, I mean, all right, Pete, how's six? Does that work, evergreens?
Well, is there enough room there?
It's a pretty big area, I'm showing a very small picture. Pete, if you wanna take a look at this? That's what I'm talking about.
I'd say five, five staggered trees.
Just, I would just say a range, and like I said, it's gotta work, so four, anywhere from four to six?
Yep, yep.
Whatever looks natural.
You know, we talked about red cedars, six feet, you know, if that saves you some money, you know, that, that's okay with us. I would've preferred to see taller trees, but-
What is, what's the benefit of the red cedar? Is it a native?
That's an indigenous species, Rob, if you can speak to that.
It's, it's evergreen.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a native plant, and it's relatively fast-growing.
Okay.
So, fills in faster.
Fine. Okay, so, we, we talked about the trees, we heard one comment on moving the parking, we'd like to hear the other board members weigh in, so we have guidance on this particular layout.
Well, the reason I, I, I transitioned over to the trees is because, you know, that will resolve some of the issue with the location of, of the electric vehicle charge stations, okay? And if-
So, you feel like, you feel like the additional trees will alleviate the need to push-
Right.
The EV parking spaces, twelve, whatever, sixteen feet closer?
Right, that, that was what I was trying to get at, all right?
Okay.
And the, you have the fence, you have the berm, that resolves that. I don't wanna speak for Pete, but he was looking at your lines and your entrance into your loading zone, and I think he was trying to help you with your, your design.
It doesn't prove, but the one works. If we move those six things, I just want the board to know they could be going in the direction of the neighbors, increasing that, and also losing some trees, so I'm just showing them.
Right, we lose all that mitigation.
Right.
I'm not disagreeing with the change, I'm just advising the board what they will see when it comes back.
But you're also going to gain, because you will be in front of where the electric pole is now, and where the panel is. Okay, so you're, and Peter's aware of, of that, so you're gonna-
All the board members are aware that the six spaces will go linear, closer to the neighbor's property. I just need to know that, so if they come back, that won't be a comment that, how come you had its spaces closer to the park, to the neighbors?
Let's hear what the other board member's saying, 'cause we have, we have one member with that, and so.
No, I, I-
What's the intention with the EV, the EV charging stations? Is it gonna be just during normal business hours, or is it gonna be overnight parking?
Good question. It would be normal business hours.
Okay, so, there'll be no overnight, so the, the concerns that were brought up about lights, headlights, cars parking overnight, loitering, all that's out the way.
I hope you turn it off in the project.
Okay. Yeah, one of them mentioned timers, or I, I suggested maybe timers, I'm sure you'll have timers.
I suggested all the timers, if you were on the project, and the lights would go off.
I envision, I envision a signage, obviously, because that road system goes that way, so it would be both of the larys, and it would be EV charging stations, and we can even have the time on it, that, that they don't operate after hours, or something, to identify. 'Cause I totally agree. I don't sound like people.
Yeah, save money as well. Now, a comment that I have, I don't wanna beat this to death, 'cause we've talked about garbage enough, and I appreciate your, your changes in that regard, I think that, that goes a long way. A thought I had was, and I, I'm, I, I'm just asking, this is not something that I'm committed to. Is there any reason why you might not consider pushing the dumpster into that, that, that knoll in the back, right? Backfilling the, using Liberty Block, and then backfilling the top of it, and that would tuck it into that, that hill?
I don't know whether you like it or not, it's, but, what I was, what I was wondering was, rather than it being there, if it was pushed into this area here, cut in, backfilled over the top with Liberty Blocks, supports on the three sides. Over here, actually, not, not for most of this, but more than that.
It makes it harder for the truck to get to it, unless you put in more blacktop.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh-
Thing is, you, you, if you, what's we're talking about, a six-foot fence, that would have to be buried.
Not a fence, Liberty Blocks.
Well, well, that's, but, yeah, it'd just be a block fence.
You got the propane.
In order for it to be, where they're just gonna come in, lift up, back, come out. Two, four, six, you have to go all the way down.
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, right.
Unless you want partially buried.
Oh, for the times and everything?
You know, I'm not telling you what way, I'm just describing the site.
That's a conversation you can have-
A partially buried would give you four feet.
Yeah, Pete, I, I, I was looking at it through my point of view, and, and what it would look like.
If you're willing to look at a partially buried.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no.
There's riding parameters there.
Sure. I, I, to me, it's a personal choice, I liked it from my point of view, with a gate in front of it, it would, it, you know, the idea was for it to not look like a dumpster that is being enclosed by fence. If, if you pushed it into that hill, backfilled around the backside with block, I'm using a manufacturer named Liberty, you know, but you-
I, I understand it might, you know, from an aesthetic viewpoint, but I didn't notice any of the dumpsters in town that were partially buried, and this is just another added cost on this development.
You know, this is, this is a new board, new day, and new opportunities. We don't have, we don't have-
I get that, I just wanna remind you, it's an ag use with a stream line-
Understood, yeah. Personally, I think it's, I started off stating that this is a personal observation that I'm presenting.
So, he'll, he'll consider it.
That's all.
If you consider, it'd be straight back, not behind the building. You couldn't go further behind the building than the hill, right?
No, if you go straight back, and you're part of the area, I thought that-
Yeah, straight back, but that puts it closer to your property, right?
It pulls it back closer, but-
Oh, I'm talking about, I'm talking about towards the farm.
That wouldn't work.
Yeah.
Because the elevations make it tough, and John would do that, the elevation would be straight back, I mean, like, literally back, straight back from the building, so.
Could it be where that partial dead tree is? That part of that-
I don't remember where.
Scraggled, looking old maple.
The best place would be right there, exactly, right there. Right, here, I said, straight back, and then I could bury the whole thing, and actually I could take some of the contours up to it, to bury it more. So, you would see, uh-
She's bringing it more down.
If I bury it more by bringing the contours up, so that you would see less of it, because it's not care-bury.
There's a, there's a bush right here, right? Now, why, why not go over in this area? No, I have an outdoor building. No? Let's go right around. Straight back would work, I'm not worrying about it.
Straight back like that?
Straight here.
Yeah, I don't know, what, what does the board think?
I could bury it there.
I, I think, if you think it through, in order for him to put it further back, these things always have to have good proximity to pavement, so that, when you put it back there, now you have to do a road back to it.
Three points concrete.
Yeah.
And so, you're sacrificing one thing for another, you're trying to achieve, and I get what you're trying to achieve, is you're trying to hide it in the landscape, but to get it to there, you're actually creating more of a visual impact.
Impact.
You're adding visual impact, so I don't know if the gross net gain is there for you. It may be just extra cost without an extra gain.
So, we'll move on, all right? Is there any other questions? Yeah, Pete?
I've got a, I've got a concern about the, this conservation, or view, excuse me, view shed planting, okay?
Well, you, I'm not-
Okay, I'm under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that to meet the view shed criteria, that Peter would have to plant, plantings between Beekman-Polequake Road and basically the existing old road that's there.
I can address that.
Excuse me?
I said, I, when you're ready, I, I have that section, and I can read it to you.
SRSP.
That's, that's one of the requirements, right?
Well, so, it's Section 155-11C1, and it's a scenic road buffer, so, it says that you have to have a continuous vegetated buffer, comma, agricultural use or open field, at least 100 feet deep. So, in the first instance, because this is an agricultural use, we are not required to do anything else. Being an agricultural use already satisfies that section, but then second, an open field would also satisfy it. So, there's no requirement to affirmatively plant that 100-foot buffer, as I'm reading it.
And you're not constructing, none of the parking lot falls within that buffer, right? None of the improvements fall within the buffer, okay?
So, so, I would ask the board to remember that, because I think that you do not wanna plant anything there. And one reason is, if you plant, if you planted anything there, then you would destroy the view, which I think is critical of the existing building as you drive up the road.
Sounds good.
In other words, you put plantings in to impede the view of the existing building, and I think that would be a loss.
And I think that's why the applicant removed some of the parking in front of the building, so that you can see the building when you drive by.
Yes. Any other-
But I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna defeat the purpose by putting a bunch of plants in between-
No, I think the planning, the purposes of the plantings are to screen it from the, you know, the neighbors on Green, Green Street, on side.
Okay, we're on the page.
Okay, any other concerns or questions for the applicant?
I think we're good.
All right, great.
So, what I heard was, we're going to add four to six red cedars, six feet high, in that gap area behind the fence.
How about six?
Well, they have to lay it out and see what's gonna fit and work.
Okay.
And that you, you wanna note that the lights are gonna be turned off at night, after the business closes?
That's already on there.
Okay, lights and EV charging stations.
Great.
And that's, those are the only changes that I understand are being requested for the next submission.
Handicapped spots, are those gonna be paved, or?
They have it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say-
Yeah.
It shows, huh?
It shows this, this is both for that little area that that's on.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
If it's not cleared, I'll clarify.
No, no, that's what I was asking.
It's intended to be asphalt or, uh, ADC.
Are ballards required?
Or?
Uh, propane, UV-
It's not next to the block, it's behind the dumpster, so.
Right. And how about for the, for the electrical panel? Is that required?
I don't think that's seen ballards for that.
No?
Joe, you might, you might, you might wanna consider something in the backside of the dumpster, ballard-wise, so that they don't push it through the fence and hit the LP tank?
I'm picturing, yeah.
You know, some, some, I don't know if your detail shows it right now, but it might, yeah, something just to prevent that from happening.
You know, like, even that panel where it is, I'm picturing the, you know, sliding ice.
I could put some ballards around it.
Just a thought, liability only.
They have it off to that level, so.
I'm thinking about his liability insurance, that's it.
No, that's a good comment, we had to drill down that far, to that level of ballads, so.
Okay, so, well-
What is, Pete, what is that, that metal mushroom? I was just curious. Is that an oil well?
Uh, it's just decorative.
Decorative?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Some nice historical stuff there, yeah. So, it's not historical, it's just decorative. It was plopped there, what, last year? It looks like it's been there for 300 years.
Maybe for probably 100 years.
100.
Probably been there for like 30 years.
It's not, you're not concealing an oil mining operation there, are you? And that's, that's the oil head? No?
Chair, you could make me out to be the enemy, I'm the, I'm the enforcer here.
Go ahead, let's do it, let's move on.
It's now 9/11, and we've only had one item on a eight-item list tonight. If there's any way, whatever business we need to take care of with this applicant, if we could do it expediently and-
I'm done, I'm done if you're done.
The last, the last request was for a waiver for the rendering, we provided the renderings with the materials list of the existing structure, and that the addition's gonna match it, and the materials, so.
Very good. Yep, what is that, by the way? What's the material?
It's hardy board, which is that cementus fiber siding, and it's going to be bred with a six-inch exposure.
Very nice. I think it's gonna look-
You all like it?
I like it.
Any comments on that, quick for them?
Anybody having any?
No, I like it, it keeps the form look.
Yeah.
I think it looks nice and slumy as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Station Grill?
Thank you, take care.
Take care.
Bye.
Joe, you mentioned the 27th, I think the actual due date is the 3rd.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure when the date was.
It's seven, 17 days prior, 17 days prior, so in April, the 3rd, Thursday, is the 20th, so the due date is April 3rd, so, yes, you have a little extra time.
We have time to ask you.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Station Grill. Oh, nice.
Chair, um, our family, my husband owns Key Bank property, and the Station Grill uses that for parking, and I feel that I should recuse myself at this moment.
Okay, very good.
In the interest of transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Garito. All right, hi.
Are you all set?
Yes, you're all set.
I'm sure you need to recuse yourself.
Recuse?
Recuse, I don't think you need to. What he's talking about, I don't think has any impact on the parking.
Well, I think, I think our chair has some lack of language, I circumcised well, and I don't even know what to say, but I think it's probably best that I do it.
Okay, all right. All right, Ms. Garito.
Okay, good evening. My name's Pete Tarrell, I'm engineer with CPL in Poughkeepsie. I represented Kevin a few years ago, when we went through the original approval for the projects, so, I know Kevin was here last month for pre-act, just to float the idea just to float the idea of having some outdoor seating. It's a popular thing these days, as we know. So we made a, we made a site plan application for a amendment to our approved site plan to erect the 30 by 50 tent, the area of the sewage disposal system, which is just to the back of the parking area off to the right of the building. It would be for approximately 50 seats. And we proposed in my letter that any outdoor should be approved, but a planning board, any outdoor dining would end at 9:00 PM. There would be lighting that would be hung inside, you know, the tent. Maybe some soft music or an occasional acoustical guitar during dining hours, but again, that would, that would end no later than 9:00 PM. We would have to provide ADA access to this, to this area. In the area where the tent's going to be, there's already an exterior handicapped ramp from the parking spaces where the handicap spots are shown. There's already a handicap ramp, so it would be very easy to provide ADA access to, to the area. With the submission I made, I had talked to the Dutchess County Department of Health on this for two reasons. One was to go over the seating. The project was approved for 101 seats. That was based on, and that was what the prior establishment was approved for, and that is limited by the capacity of the septic system. So when I talked to the health department, they, and we included an email from them in our, in our application that they didn't have a problem with it as long as the total number of 101 seats was not exceeded, so that we could take 50 seats, not physically take, but 50 seats that were allocated to inside, allocate them to the outside, and then Kevin would have to, whatever, you know, cordoned off some areas inside, move some seats around, so that there was, whatever that is, 51, 51 seats that would be left, that'd be left on the inside. And the health department, I specifically asked, I said, "Do you have any problem with erecting a tent over the septic system?" I wasn't sure if that would affect, you know, the functionality of the system, I didn't think so. And they confirmed that, no, that wouldn't be an issue. Obviously, we don't want to put in any of, you know, the poles where the leaching lines are. We know where they are. When we did the project a few years ago, there was some reports to two or three of the laterals, so we were able, like, to locate where all of them are, so, you know, we know where they are. And I'm just looking through my, through my notes here. So on the original, original site plan, there was a note, number 10, that specifically prohibited outdoor dining. I think that was a result of some issues that the town had with the prior establishment. So as part of this application, I amended note number 10 to include the five items that I had in my cover letter. So we're here to discuss the application further, and hopefully the board's amenable to scheduling a public hearing for next month, and I believe this also has to be referred to the Dutchess County Planning Department under 239-M. So that's really it, unless, like, Kevin, if you have anything to add or answer questions?
Anything concern you?
So, no, Pete went through everything. I think our town attorney has also taken a look at some of the things I had in my letter. He suggests that this is going to be a type 2 action. So if the board deems it appropriate right now, you could, you could make a motion to deem this type 2 action, and that would end the secret process.
Okay. You want to start with that, a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we classify this as a type 2 secret.
Jason?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second that? All right. Rob, any comments?
Yeah, just quickly, discussion.
Sure.
How do you arrive at type 2? Is it less than 4,000 square feet of disturbance?
What they do is 4,000 square foot of floor area for commercial activity.
Yeah.
So, yes.
So this is, this doesn't meet that threshold?
Correct.
Okay. And there's no new parking proposed, there's no other disturbance?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
No changes.
I'm prepared.
And I should add, I should add also that, you know, because we're not changing the number of seats, we do conform to parking, we're able to park, we're able to park the number of cars on our own site based upon the requirement in the zoning code, which I don't remember off the top of my head, I think it's one space for every three seats, maybe.
Yeah.
So I think we've shown 34 or 35 parking, parking spaces on our, you know, site, so. Other than that, there won't be any changes except for, you know, the tent, which, assuming the board's going to schedule a hearing, I think we could bring a picture of the tent, or I could submit it, like, ahead of time, you know, and pass it out.
I talked to him today, when he made one of my.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of the things we had mentioned, you know, maybe just at least being able to tell them, you know, maybe the tent at least, or something to that effect, just so that you don't put a purple tent out there and then everybody's shocked, or whatever else, so. Yeah. You had mentioned the outdoor.
We were in a discussion, I don't know, we were about to vote on the secret issue?
We can, we can.
Did you?
No, we didn't vote yet.
Okay.
You want to?
My apologies, go ahead.
The motion is to grant type 2 action? All right, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for catching that, Rob.
Thank you.
The outdoor entertainment, you know, Kevin, last time you mentioned that there was some cornhole going on out there, so that note 10 specifically, you talked about basically nothing outdoor.
I was making a question, no outdoor dining, no permanent service out there, but I mean.
It said dining service or entertainment, so, I mean, that, so if you, if you intend to continue to do cornhole out there periodically, you should probably incorporate it into this application now. And then that way they can know that that would be as part of it as well. That's the suggestion there. With regard to that Key Bank parking, I had put something in here. Pete was able to make parking compliant completely on the site as part of the last site plan review. You may recall that when we were talking about people crossing over Palmer, that there needed to be agreements on file with Key Bank, and we were talking about crosswalks for safety, you know, people that might have a few drinks walking across the road, not paying attention. So I think my recollection of the site plan application there was because everything was compliant, that the parking wasn't needed at Key Bank. Historically, there was also a lot of trash that was left in Key Bank's parking lot, et cetera, so we know that that's not your operation right now. Your operation has been, you know, as far as I've heard, has been very respectful to everybody with that, with regard to that. But we probably should have something on file with regard to any kind of agreement you have with Key Bank for parking as part of the file, at least.
Okay, but we need, I need to know exactly what level. Do you want to just management over there? Because I have, where I don't hold the ownership of the property liable, that paper's been signed, and so that, they're not liable for anything on that.
Yeah, my recollection of the discussion was.
During the hours that they're closed.
Yeah. My recollection of the discussion was the owner and the operation needed to be able to agree to it.
The operation, but what, to what level? Because I have heard, you know, we want to be voted Key Bank in Chicago, the headquarters. That's, you know, that's not very.
Oh. Means corporate versus.
Whatever would make our attorney happy, I think, would be.
I know you're not going to be able to get it from corporate, but you can get it from somebody who has signing capability.
Yeah, the branch.
Branch manager, or something to that effect, maybe.
And you do have, and you do have the agreement with, you know, the property owner, that's the whole, you know, like harmless and insurance, right?
Yep.
Right, right. And, you know, just any kind of lighting or anything that you could show there, just to make sure. I know you put some hours of operation on there, we appreciate seeing that as well.
Yeah, I can get some information on, I don't know how, I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, is it just going to be the bulb lights hanging, the string lights?
I can get a picture of what, you know, it's just going to be, you know, like the bulbs that are on, like, a string?
Yes.
Yeah, you see the ones I have wrapped, they're just going to go up and down inside the tent.
Okay.
So we'll get.
They're all LED, so should be plenty of light. But I think the, the tent company has pretty close pictures of their different lighting. I'm sure they might have something.
Okay. And that was it, so then I figured that the board should provide you with any kind of comments, and then we can talk about any procedure after that.
I don't have any. I'm, I think it's an important decision, you know, on your part. You know, especially with the pandemic and all, a lot of people are really enjoying outdoor seating.
Can I speak for that?
Sure.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's been a year and a half, and the demand for outside has been, I hate to use the term overwhelming, but it's substantial. A lot of people come in, and there's still a lot of people, even though pandemic's coming to an end sooner, soon, even when I had outside dining at my other place, which I have normally, I even used the parking lot there because the demand was that high for it. People still want to be outside, and right now, business is really tough, and I need to do whatever I can to, you know, accommodate more people and just to get more income.
I personally think you're running a great operation, and then you have all of that property in the back that's being underutilized.
Right, and I've, and like I stated at the last meeting, I've proved that, you know, on average, we don't even use a third of the water that's permitted. I think I average about 480 gallons a day, I'm allotted 2,000.
Right.
And I monitor every day, again, when we redid the place, we put in the waterless urinals, and we've got a lot of water-efficient equipment in the building. Anyway. So my understanding was a lot of it was because the septic wasn't taken care of, and I spent a lot of money to correct that.
Yeah, I'd have that conversation with Anthony every time I called him to renew my insurance. It's bad.
It's just amazing that the solution was as simple as it was, just level of distribution boxes that couldn't be taken care of before, but plus we did the leach fields and serviced everything, grease traps, everything.
He's thrilled, yeah. But does the board have any comments, though, about the project? This expansion of it?
I have some questions.
Please.
I have, like, three questions. Is the tent permanent, or are you taking it down at some point during the year?
No, it'll definitely be seasonal. It'll be a seasonal tent with, I'm going to try to have roll-up sites, so when it's inclement weather, but it'll just be probably the end of April till September, early October.
We'll note that, that's, that's an excellent point. I'll add that, I'll add that to the notes on the map that's seasonal, and we'll have, like, dates, you know, proximity dates equal to.
I'd say the end of October, if you say November 1st, or something like that.
Thanksgiving.
I was, I was thinking it was going to be year-round, and you might heat it. Quite honestly.
Definitely.
Okay, yeah.
Or do you, do you have a fence in the backyard? I don't recall, is it, are you fenced from the neighbor next door?
There is a fence. 50% of it is a fence and the rest is woods lined and heavy, heavy trees. So the, what would be north and east side are fenced in and heated. There's no access, you can't just walk off the property anywhere. In the back or the other side, the west side.
And finally, do you anticipate any controversy? We're going to have a public hearing. Do you anticipate any neighbors coming out to complain about?
I would hope not, because there's nobody right there, and the noise isn't going to be anything substantial, and we're going to be operating inside the, I believe it's a commercial area, we, inside the noise ordinance. And we're not going to do anything extreme, we're not going to have, you know, rock and roll out there or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
All right, any action for us to take at this point? Dan?
Uh, yeah, you can set a public hearing date. If you choose.
All right, and the date is?
I just looked it up, it is April 20th.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for April 20th.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, public hearing set.
And then, you know, you'll go ahead, Dan, sort of relate to county planning?
Yeah, yeah, we certainly will.
So should I, in advance of the hearing, why don't I submit whatever the timeframe is ahead of time? You know, the catalog cuts of, you know, the tent, something on the lights, and instead of, instead of recreating, like, the plan again, maybe I'll just update the one, note number 10, that we had, what we were going to do to also list, you know, the seasonal tent and, you know, the dates, and I think I got it down, a couple other things here about, you know, the cornhole and other similar type, you know, activities or something like that. So I'll update that, but not submit the whole plan, just a section of it, maybe, you know, for now.
That sounds like a good game rule.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe you can just note, you know, some, several of my comments had to do with the fact that it still said, like, proposed entrance and stuff like that. Well, that's already all there now.
Right.
It was just a matter of maybe just making it so that all the things are specifically proposed with this, or, you know, really highlighted on it, that's all.
Yeah, I'll go through, I mean, it's really, you know, I looked at it, like, today, Dan, and it's really not that much, so.
It's, it wouldn't be too bad.
So we'll take it off, but if I, so why don't I just go ahead and, like, submit the whole, like, plan, if we're going to go take that off and add some of these other, like, notes? So I'll do that, plus the, plus the catalog cuts.
That'll make sense, and then I can send that, I'll send that submittal to the county. Because, you know, they always, they always get very set on their landscaping and lighting, so at least they would be able to have an idea of the lighting.
You're meeting with technical soon?
Yeah, I spoke with the gentleman yesterday, they were setting up a meeting, should be within next week. Because I have another event, the, the, one more hour to people, I got, then stop, so I'm going to put that, knock that shit down.
Okay.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. Duchess Contracting Corporation.
Where's the guy there?
It's been a while. This one's come back.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, guys. Brian's close, Dan's close, I'm here. Obviously, we all know about this project, it's been around for a while.
Could you start over from the very beginning and just bring us up to date?
We're going to give you this.
Every detail, I want every.
What year were you born?
We all go back to being, we're going to go back to about 2001.
I was only kidding.
But long story short, a couple of years ago, we came in with a multifamily concept in a phased development plan. Phase one was 54 units, mixed between one and two bedrooms. And then phase two was the balance, which brought us up to around 90 units. When this project and several of the projects in town were in front of the planning board, there was a petition to adopt performance for access to water and sewer. This project, a couple of the projects, were given an allocation based upon the use that was permitted at the time of that application. At the time of that application was mixed-use retail and restaurant, going back to the early 2000s. Economies changed, housing changed, and a couple of years ago, we went with the multifamily concept. So the reason why the project was phased is because we were initially given a 10,000-gallon allocation, plus or minus, and that supported basically phase one. And looking at this project globally, from a secret standpoint, we got to look at phase one and phase two as one development action to get through the secret process. Getting additional water to support phase two, dealing with Dutchess County Water and Sewer Authority is a unique experience, and don't want anybody else to go through that pain. But long story short, the ability for us to gain the amount of water for phase two, it's just, it got to a point where it's, let's just stop, let's take a look at the project, and let's, let's pivot back to, just, let's just go with phase one, with the allocation of that 10,000 gallons. So basically, what we've done is we've taken phase two off the table, just going with the 54-unit layout. And basically, here tonight, just to get reaction from the board and just focus on building layout. If you look at the TC zoning concept, it forces the buildings forward, toward Route 55, and you actually have a 0 to 15-foot front yard setback. So it really pushes these buildings up pretty close to Route 55 there. So what I wanted to do tonight is just refresh the drawing concept. It's a realignment of Bishoff Lane. We'd be coming in with basically the town TC standard, which is, you know, an intersection at a 90-degree, and then basically going with a, you know, a side-street concept, which is illustrated in the master plan. Basically, if we've pushed the buildings up toward Route 55, access off of the new street that would be proposed, and then obviously providing access if there's any future development that would be coming down the pipeline.
Where's Bishoff Lane? Is that right in the center?
It's, that's going to be our realignment route, but Bishoff Lane actually comes across in, like, a skew.
Oh, okay.
Is this a three-story building?
Okay.
And, you know, we're, we still have to go through the iterations, and Dan did a pretty comprehensive outline of what we need to submit to the board, so we're looking at, you know, freshening our, our elevations, you know, building codes change slightly, so we'll be working on our elevations. Also, we have to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan, so detailing drainage and addressing runoff and groundwater and, you know, those things. Also, from a site planning standpoint, this is just like basic concept of building position and parking layout. But as we get input from the board, we'll be tweaking parking to make sure that, you know, we're meeting reasonable sideyard setbacks and front yard setbacks and distances to the, to the buildings. And Dan did a good job of just kind of giving us an outline of what, you know, obviously the code speaks to. But again, just tonight, just to kind of get a feel from the board, since it has been so long, and just proceeding with that, that phase one concept. Like, did I cover it?
And the 10,000 gallons you have?
You did.
And the ten thousand gallons you have will cover this. And you got the sewage to go with it also.
Yes. And if, if Dalton ever decides to, to, you know, improve their system, I'm sure they have a plan that we're all looking forward to. That hopefully gives the town some additional capacity in the water and sewer side.
Which makes me question, will you, um, will you provide mains to a, a, add, uh, other properties to this? In other words, access as part of your project?
Yeah, the utility access points and layout still remain, you know, if, if the, this Dalton never has, you know, additional capacity, there would be stub, stub inlets. We still can bring the water down to, to Route fifty-five.
So there would be stubs for other projects if they came available. Okay, that's good.
How many, how many floors?
Three.
Are these buildings, there are three?
That's a town center.
You're still going to tie into Dalton?
That is, that is the concept, that's what we have our, our allocation for, and that was part of that, it was a study done in two thousand and seven. Um, that incorporated the L.A. Estates, Victoria, this piece, um, it kind of went through that, that process.
Well, they need, gonna need more capacity when they upgrade, correct? Cause the system's like thirty-five, forty years old.
Yeah, from what I understand, just from the brief interactions we've had with, on the, on the future planning side, it seems like they may be coming up with, you know, some recommendations to service the system. I don't know if they've actually done any studies, but I think there is an agreement that, you know, they do need additional capacity.
Right.
But, you know, with any kind of major expansion like that, the funding of that, so for that reason, we're just, we're going to proceed with the fifty-four and what we're allocated for. And the applicant has been in touch with, um, as was mentioned earlier, with the Barton application. Obviously access to those facilities is through the HOA parcel. Um, so we've had, um, conversations with the H, with the HOA based upon the concept that we are going with now, which is just, we're just going to proceed with the fifty-four. That they were remitable with working with the client. We'd obviously have to formalize that with agreements and documentation to give the, the town confidence on that. But, uh, those conversations have been, had, and have been positive.
So you're looking to come through Van Skoy?
Around the back.
Around the back, is that Van, yeah, Van Skoy? And you'd cut through the open space on Van Skoy?
There's an open space, yeah.
Is that attainable?
Brian, what are you, what are you doing at, uh, Bishoff Lane?
Yeah.
What are you doing at Bishoff Lane?
We're going to realign, uh, that, that intersection. Obviously, I don't know if you can see it there.
Interesting. Okay.
And again, we're following what, kind of what the town center code dictates with that layout.
They take what?
We're taking into, the, the town center has a pretty specific guideline of how to, uh, set up these roadways so that you have secondary access that goes parallels Route fifty-five. So that, that design that's shown in the master plan can incorporate inspections.
Can you, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Pete, you go.
I dropped my, oh, I know what I, I have a major concern with traffic on Route fifty-five. Okay, and I think that is something that needs to be addressed with the state basically before you go too far with this at all. And if I remember from prior times that you were before this board, that the buildings were scrunch up against Route fifty-five, basically within fifteen feet of fifty-five.
That's the cooking.
And I, I think that's, I don't know whether that's still in the town center code, but I think that it's an error on the pa- part of town center code. Especially because you're talking about, you're talking about residential housing. And now we're asking sidewalks to be put in, so that you're going to have that, people have access to other, uh, businesses. Be it, uh, fine, in this case, be it the grocery store or be it go- going down to the library.
It's kind of strange they didn't acquire that with the, uh.
I don't know, as I said, I don't know whether the, I don't know whether the, uh, current code calls for that, uh, the buildings to be right on top of fifty-five, but I believe if that's the design you come up with, I would vote against it.
Yeah, I mean, he's pushed it back a bit, right?
Tried to, yeah, we tried to push it back as much of a buffer as possible.
And I, and I also, I also think that it's a very extremely important that, uh, before you go too far with this, that, uh, you speak to the state about, uh, traffic because, uh, there is a need for turning lanes, um, in, in that area.
Did we, when, when we, we took that into account, um, when we were in front of the board last, so we, we just called it in here. Got a study in draft format, has been prepared and has looked at that. We'll obviously plan, um, that report with DMT, uh, the present application to initiate. But we'll be secret, but I think we'll have to circulate to them because the plan has changed.
But, but Brian, that was, when was the last time, that communications? I think this should be a totally new start.
I agree, and I, and I, and that's the way we're pitching this. We're basically going to amend the application, we're coming with a new unit, uh, an updated, uh, grant for updated traffic study that solely focuses on fifty-four units that are not proposed.
How many square feet is each unit going to be?
Uh, we meet the minimum, I think the town code has a minimum four, right, don't we?
Is it nine?
Eight hundred, nine hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred feet or square feet?
Yeah, I think eight hundred, is it?
Yeah.
Minimum material living space.
It's a lot, too.
How many acres do you allocate this?
We're a hair over five acres.
I'm sorry?
We're a hair over five acres.
Oh, a hair over?
A hair over.
[laughing].
A hair, not much. So yeah, it's a, it's a, the way it's written, twelve acre, twelve units per acre.
Right.
There's a lot of, right? So technically, sixty units.
You're saying you would get sixty units in here if, uh?
If you, if you take it from different, a couple of different things going side development, obviously. So if you look at from acreage standpoint, we're, we're, we're allowed sixty, but if you back to like a water allocation on a per bedroom basis, based upon our, our, uh, two bedroom and one bedroom thresholds that we have, we, we, you know, you can only get fifty-four units based upon the configuration that we have between the morning two bedrooms. So it's, you're basically, you're, you're constrained by the gallons per day per bedroom, so that's why we don't have the sixty, these kind of.
Yeah, because you're basing it on design or using the, the public, public water supply.
Right.
But that sixty units you're coming up with, I mean, that's exclusive of roads and stormer features and everything?
That, that's just.
That's just you taking the, the acreage and dividing it by twelve units per acreage. So it wouldn't necessarily end up as sixty, it could be.
That was giving you the four.
A general idea, yeah, yeah, I see.
Hey, Brian, seeing as this is a new, uh, a new look and basically you're dressing it as a new application, um, at one point, when you were before the board, uh, you had received a variance or an interpretation that enabled you to increase the number of units on the parcel, correct?
That was a different project.
No, it was, it, this was the project, it was eighteen units.
Yes, it's the project.
Right.
Huh?
It was eighteen units per acre. We got it increased to eighteen units per acre for the ZBI drawings, probably two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so.
That's off the table now. It's, it's not even relevant right now because we're not, we're not doing eighteen units per acre.
You got a parking.
Okay, well, my, I think my point is, is, or we're, I'm striving with this, is, okay, you're not doing the eighteen units per acre, but I don't want you to come back in five years and request the eighteen units per acre.
See, it's not on the table right now. I, I think if, I, what, what, what's going to control town center and has always controlled town center is the availability of water and sewer.
Right.
You know, it's a dense, it's a, it's a great plan if you have central services. If you don't, you, you scratch your head and you just pay taxes.
Right.
So if, if Dalton has excess capacity for water and sewer, I guarantee there will be a line of applicants coming in and having development plans for your review.
Yeah, in my opinion is we, we were contemplating the higher density as the potential for getting a water line and possibly a sewer line down to state Route fifty-five. And it just, that just seems very tenuous to me.
I don't, I didn't anticipate the, the, the struggle with Duchess County Water and Sewer to the, to the, to the level that it was. And at some point, you just got to throw your hands up and go.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming you, I, I just think we need to go back to more of a conventional, look, I, I always had a problem with this three stories in our town. I think when, when we go to a public hearing, I would suspect we're going to have a lot of people coming out and have a big problem with that.
The idea behind, as I was on the, on the comprehensive review, I don't know if you were.
I was.
But it was to create a Millbrook look. They're trying to create a village where it doesn't.
Yeah.
I mean, two stories, but I don't know if that, if the town center says three stories, does it specifically say three stories?
Well, it allows for three.
It does?
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and retail on the bottom if, if you want, but small mom and pop retails.
Yeah, all right, so, but I mean, the only way I could sort of get on board with this plan is if we're not increasing the density later and then just maybe putting a, an easement over the remainder of the site and keeping it in open space.
Yeah.
And I think, uh, I think that would be agreeable to Dalton Farms that, and the residents on Van Skoy. Quite honestly, I'm surprised that you're in discussions about access through Van Skoy.
I don't know if we're going through, I don't think we have.
Or to, no, okay.
I think it's just still in the HOA piece.
HOA, all right, but I mean, uh, the only thing behind it is Van Skoy. So where, where's your road going?
Uh, I'll take it, I don't have the overall arrow.
Oh, no, okay.
But we'll, we'll look into it, I mean, I think this is.
All right, I personally, what would be the, so what, what is it that you're trying to accomplish by going through the HOA?
The water and sewer.
Getting water and sewer.
Oh, water and sewer, not a road?
No, not a road.
Or access, okay.
Water and sewer.
I, I, I misheard, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah, good, okay, that makes sense, and then.
Again, if, if you're looking at future development, the entire border has, has future development possibilities. It all hinges on one thing.
Yes.
You go to town?
Yeah.
The town provides water and sewer for everybody or Dalton does, cause you get two options.
Or somebody real big comes in enough to do it.
Right, so, I mean, putting an easement across a piece of property, I, I can tell you right now, the applicants, you know, you're basically shutting down potential development rights if the ability for water and sewer.
Understood.
You know, I, I know segmentation in secret, but.
It's all right.
You know, from, from that standpoint, there's no capacity. We've, we've made efforts to try to work with the county to resolve that, it's been impossible.
Right.
Our application tonight in L.A. Estates, it was impossible just to get a pump station reviewed, it took two years.
Unbelievable.
And three engineers.
Yeah.
You know, that's a simple, existing pump station, and all we're doing is taking two pumps out and putting two new ones in. Three engineers, two years.
The, the Dalton Farms community is frustrated as well because there's some capacity issues. I haven't experienced them personally, but the, uh, the, the pump station is, I think, thirty years old and, uh, our, our payments towards it, uh, are completed in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
So they're supposed to upgrade it.
Supposed to, I've heard that.
But I haven't heard anything about it, other than what I just told you. I was at a public hearing, not the last one, but the one before it. That's how I got my information. Yeah.
Unless you get the asset ready.
Yeah, so, uh, but I'm, I'm on board with, uh, Rob in that, uh, that, that whole parcel behind it remains open, yeah. Is that what you said, Rob?
Well, I just, I mean, let me put it a little more, you know, technically, I don't, you're pretty much maxing out the density for the whole lot under its current zoning, here at fifty-four. If, um, the, if you do this, there's potential to develop the back still, which would increase the density above what the current zoning was suggesting. I have concerns about the density. I have concerns about the traffic on fifty-five, the amount of people, the amount of cars. It's already getting really difficult to drive over there.
You have to open the rides.
Well, Rob, if you look at this, if you want to.
A TELSA.
What'd he say?
Isn't that the self-driving car?
Right, so I, I'm just saying, if you want to concentrate then, Melman, we do, uh, we do do that sometimes. We concentrate density in one part of the lot while preserving open space in the other part of the lot.
Right.
And that's not a bad idea, I like that idea. So if you're willing to consider that, I'd be willing to, I would be willing to get through that.
I would like to make a suggestion, and this, this is, this is keeping with the streetscape concept. But you've got acreage that you're not utilizing, and I look at this as an apartment with parking lots. No amenity, no open space except from the back, whereas you could take these units, spread it on the, on the property and make it more, uh, nice for families, for common use, uh, to take it off the highway. Um, and again, that's kind of not in concept with what we wanted for, not we, but they pushed for town center. But the, the property could be utilized much better for the, the inhabitants.
Yeah, I mean.
By spreading it out.
Yeah, I think so.
Spreading it out and keeping the same density as what's being proposed now.
And put a gazebo.
But spreading it out.
A gazebo in the center with a little park.
One way or the other, either concentrating the density in one side and making open space or spreading it out and having open space throughout.
Well, I think the key is phase one, they're looking to do phase two.
Well, that's the thing, and I, I, we were all, we were all sort of going along with that under the promise that we were going to get water and sewer down to fifty-five. And I think that promise is over, I agree with you. So it's a, now a time for reconsidering of, of this, and let's not even assume we're going to get water and sewer down there. And, uh, and what do we do at the site in case we don't get water and sewer?
Well, in this case.
The whole application is water, so.
They have.
The source never offered.
Right.
This doesn't function without ours.
Right.
All right, so that's fine, do whatever you need to do to get water and sewer. You're making a development proposal, you proposed to us how you're going to get water and sewer to your development. We don't have to have a negotiation about the rest of the town center. We're just, let's just limit it to.
But we could make this nice in a park setting as opposed to jamming it all in one little.
I agree with you.
You know, spread it out.
Increase the density.
Oh, so you're saying spread it, spread, spread the buildings away?
Yeah, and put.
But that's, this is a discussion, that's.
Yeah, it's just a discussion at this point.
That's, that's my opinion at this point. I'm trying to give you the advantage of how I'm thinking.
I'd also suggest that he has ten percent of lot coverage by Impervious that he still has ability to use on the site. He's using forty percent, code allows fifty. Uh, and in terms of density, it doesn't mean he wouldn't be able to do some small commercial also in the back or something to that effect. It's a town center, it's supposed to be a mixture of residential, commercial.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure if you want to necessarily restrict that, I mean, that, that would be an amended site plan, of course, too. Um, but, but certainly you want to make sure that you're happy with the layout of the residential right now, because that's what's on the table. And make sure it has some of those concepts of amenities or whatever else, you know, so maybe a little bit, uh, to, on the, uh, on the drawing table there on that.
Yeah, good, just for discussion, it's, you know, it's been a while, so.
Can't help you.
We'll save all this and.
We'll probably be back at this again in ten years.
I generally like the circulation, it's in keeping with the town center.
Oh, yeah.
Making a secondary connection in the back.
And a lot of those utilities are going to be inherent in the roadway.
Yeah.
You know, so there still is that possibility if, in the future.
Yeah.
And, and that's the whole point of bringing the, uh, the roads up to the property lines also, you know. So if you look on the, um, on this side over here, they're bringing the road up to here, which goes through all this undeveloped property that's parallel to Route fifty-five.
Yeah.
That's the town road concept from, from the town center.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all right with.
The comp plan.
Well, like, if you look at Eastdale, Eastdale has, I mean, this is a small scale, but Eastdale has, you know, their commercial right along with the.
Yep, absolutely.
So.
All right, can I be enforcer now? Are we good?
Yeah.
You, you be the.
All right, let's go.
We'll be going.
You good, Brian?
We're good.
Yeah.
I hear you, so.
Thank you, Brian.
I got the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like, sometimes you try to be accommodating and nice rather than draconian and, uh, it's not appreciated, unfortunately.
I think it works better than we thought.
Town Center Square.
Town Center.
Is that you?
That's me.
That's you. Okay. Let's do it.
This is an existing parcel. The library's located at the intersection of town center, what is it, different center in?
Low Valley.
Low Valley, that's right. Low Valley. This is on the same road, just two or three parcels down from the library toward the law field. We're almost kind of like diagonal from the recreation field.
It's gonna be the third lot?
Third lot.
Yeah.
Third lot.
This is the one with the deed restriction on it.
Right. So we'll talk about that. I'll give you the initial run through and then we'll talk about the deed restriction. So applicant purchased parcel, would like to do four, four units. Same town center concept, pushing the building floor, putting sidewalks along town center, parking in the rear. This type of layout, we're gonna have a garage at the back. We park in the unit, two stories, between, you know, the three, two and three bedrooms. It's gonna rely on what our septic gives us. We've done preliminary testing because everybody's built average, or that's your 30 minute per grade out there, so not the best, but not the worst stuff. But that's gonna define our bedroom count. So I think right now we have, I think I tried to shoot for four units with two bedrooms each, maybe one or two units with three, but we're still working in that. But overall, four units total within that footprint with parking in the back. And then we have some visitor parking or accessory parking on the other side of the backside of the parking lot there. We did a small little side, bumped out on the dwelling for your water treatment. It's gonna be an individual well with central water here, so we'll have tree carving for the water used in the individual units. We showed some lighting, some disturbance limits. We're under an acre. We tried to keep this development tight just for, from a financial standpoint while trying to meet town center standards. Again, now, big thing is deed restriction. And talking to the applicant, I believe we have an effort of dealing with that. I have that one here. You want us to, you want us to do it?
Sure.
This was one of our, Dan gave me the heads up on the deed restriction with this piece. And we also had the applicant work with his attorney, so there may have been some conversations that I wasn't able to.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello, Jerry S. Wright. Thank you for having me. As far as the deed restriction on this property, it's something going back to like before 1900. Obviously obscure, not in alignment with town center. Speaking with my attorney, spoke with the town's attorney, Craig Wallace. They came to some sort of understanding. As far as on our end, we're gonna proceed with some, I don't know, lawsuit against somebody obscure for paperwork purposes, I guess, to lift this deed restriction. I don't know the exact legal terms, a bar claim suit or something. I don't know if that makes any sense, but. Seemed to be more of a paperwork issue to me, the way it sounded, than some substantial deed restriction. The way it was explained, the only beneficiaries, there are really no beneficiaries to this deed restriction left surviving or otherwise in the immediate vicinity. As you know, the town park is there, you know, and the adjacent properties are all wooded. That was pretty much it.
I will have to recuse myself on this as well, this gentleman, and we are in contract sale of another piece of property.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yep, not a problem. Alright.
I just realized.
Anything to talk about with this? I mean, does it matter to us?
So I did talk to Mr. Beck, who represents, he's the attorney. And I asked him for the abstract and I did bring this up to his attention, this deed restriction. And we did agree that this application could proceed while the applicant pursues a court order to extinguish that particular deed restriction, which is, you know, would keep both matters running parallel to one another. And if this matter concludes before that one, the lawsuit, it could be an open condition. You can always consider a conditional approval, but that's what we're sort of inclined, are inclined to do at the end of this application. But the whole idea would be by extinguishing the deed restriction, then the applicant could proceed as a right and achieve its density that this application, you know, calls for. And multifamily structures that is the subject of the application.
Okay.
I don't know if everyone's familiar with the deed restriction.
For a one-family house, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
One or two family.
One or two? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
I didn't hear yet, and I need to know what that deed restriction is. Say it again.
There's a copy of it.
Yeah, the restriction is that you can't build, I mean, there's some other things, like you can't not finish a building or you can't put like some oddly shaped garage, I think. But the main one of concern for me with this project is that it's limiting us to supposedly only being able to build a one or, a single family or a two-family building strictly. Which is, again, not allowed to do that for town center zoning.
Well, the restriction, the restriction was put in there prior to zoning, so it's like in the 80s.
I think it goes back to where that, it was like, the single family restriction goes back to, I think, like 89 when I was looking through the, like some stuff way back, and then out of nowhere, a two-family restriction popped out and I recorded something, I think it's 70s.
Didn't know about that one, yeah.
I mean, worst case, town center does allow by special use, two-family as well. So, you know, depending on how that court proceedings go for you.
I mean, it's all hinged on that, right? We're not really doing anything now, other than listening to you and having a discussion about your proposal. That has to happen first, so.
I think they can run that. Well, that's, yeah, that was the agreement.
See, I'm sorry.
I think it runs parallel.
They run parallel?
Yeah, it's basically, we're basically proceeding at our own, this would you say?
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, I think from how it's been explained, and I think we can get that restriction extinguished.
Okay.
So we'd like to take this to the next level, formalize a review, and, you know, obviously work with the county and your town center.
So let's focus on the, is there anything you need to do?
Yeah, I mean, right now, and, you know, to be fair, I didn't do a technical review. I was speaking with Craig on that only for the fact that if it was determined that you couldn't do anything legally, then I'm spending your money looking at it and, you know, frankly, my time too, so. Which is a little limited.
Yeah, I guess.
But anyway.
You're stretched, you're stretched for sure, Dan.
You know, the, the code sections that I placed in the, like, the last paragraph of the DCC site plan, those are all applicable to this one as well. You got your town center, you got your multifamily, you know, your parking, your landscaping buffer, all that kind of stuff, so. You know, as long as you're starting to take a look at those things, that's what I'll be looking at. And, you know, we can start the review on this, you know, now, or if you feel like you're gonna revise any plans before.
Yeah, I'd like to get you some architecturals too, so we can start off with colors and what these things, you know, like.
Right.
But this was kind of like, almost like last, you know, just kind of get your feel-good from the board on positioning.
Right.
You know, location, and then we'll submit at the end of this and offer additional.
My only comment, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this is about the third or fourth discussion I've been in, because I've been in some in the office there, some work sessions. On the last application that was brought before us, and I believe they went to the zoning board of appeals as well, didn't, for the purpose of positioning it more in line with the other projects on that road now. We've kind of, we have the Sparrow's Nest setback. We have the library setback. You know, is this?
So Town Center Grove was the proposal that was on the second parcel.
Okay.
So the one between Sparrow's Nest and this one.
Alright.
And they've appeared before the planning board one time.
Okay.
I don't know if it's coming back or not.
Okay.
You may be familiar with the zoning board because they may have went there for a general opinion, not for a decision. But I thought that the concept was that they were gonna maybe split some of the difference with the setback with Sparrow's Nest and, you know, start bringing some of it back up towards the front, but, you know, there should be some sort of coordination between the location of the buildings on that second parcel, if it's actually an application that's moving forward. Again, I haven't heard in a while. And also, you know, obviously septics and wells, for public water supply wells and everything else, so, separation, so.
And what did we do as far as sidewalk with the Sparrow's Nest? And this, and this application?
Sparrow's Nest is reserved to build them at a future time as of right now.
And what about the middle?
Because it was gonna be the sidewalks to nowhere.
Right.
But if multiple things start clicking there, we'll have to start building them.
So I just wanted to, I wanted to mention that to the board, see if they have any comments that could help them in the early stages of this.
Yeah, that Town Center Grove, by the way, for informational purposes only, they came in the January meeting and they have not submitted, made any other submissions since.
Okay, right, okay.
And do you recall by chance if the zoning board was in favor of them pushing it back a little bit? Or, or did they even have that?
They actually asked the board to move forward with scheduling a public hearing at the ZBA for the March meeting, but it didn't happen.
I thought that was a coordinated review that we'd have to do seeker here before they got variance.
That's exactly right.
And they haven't been back here.
Alright, so those are the items to keep in mind, you know.
If you go faster, if you go faster, they're gonna work around you. That's all.
Deed restrictions, building position and sidewalks. That's all.
What's the board's take on positioning toward the road? Just, is it?
Well, I think, like Dan said, my opinion is that it should, it be, I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen next door. So if nothing happens next door, what do you, what do you think about?
I don't know. I mean, I like to see elevations, but I don't have a problem with trying to maintain the town center standard.
Okay.
You know. It's just, are you gonna require variance for this?
We got it right on the front line.
Unless we cause him to push the building back.
Right, right, exactly.
So if we were to cause him to push it back, then he would.
It's these three. This is the one he's here.
This is one he's on.
Yeah, so it's the last one before it's town land.
And this is.
And that's Sparrow's Nest. That was that Town Center Grove proposal.
How many units can you get for, per the zoning?
Well, the limiting factor here is the.
The covenant?
Yeah, your water. Well.
Oh, the well and the sewer?
Yeah. No, well, there's no sewer.
The well and the septic, I mean?
Yeah, it's only municipal, so.
I mean, you could get 24 units if you had water and sewer.
Per, per a code?
Well, that's one aspect of your code. So from a unit per acre standpoint, you could get 24. You got dimensional coverage and all that too. That'll probably ease away, but.
It's probably on top of the aquifer, right?
It's a top of a overlay there, I think, yeah.
Yep. Which means you'd have to go by ground.
So what would you do with the rest of the property?
It's, it is what it is. You know, unless water and sewer comes around, it's in the same position as all the other lots.
So you're maxed out per the physical limitations?
You're maxed out on this because of your public water supply. We're under five minutes. We can stay at four. So technically we're not a public water supplier.
Okay.
The best we can, it's the best we could do with this piece, based upon that.
I appreciate the plans, you know, the way they're presented initially.
Amazing plans, aren't they?
They are.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Incredible engineer.
The best.
The best.
The best.
Alright, guys.
Hey, hey, I'm right here.
Thank you. Yep. We didn't want you to be judged by, you know, just one particular. Thank you. Okay. I lost my agenda in my pod. I need help.
Here, lot line.
But I forgot where we were, Jason. Could you tell me?
You're on the.
Alright, very good. Pizzuto Lot Line. Pizzuto Lot Line. Are they here tonight? Hi. Oh, there you are. Okay. I have to use the bathroom again.
I'm gonna steal you too. I'm gonna go home.
He'll be before us for a project.
Rob, you wanna take over for me?
Again? Where are you going?
I'm gonna go to the bathroom.
You can't leave.
I gotta go.
You're already at that age? Yeah, every 20 minutes. That happens.
I know.
And you volunteer.
Yeah, that's what we should do.
I'm never helping Dan that again.
I got this.
Oh, I think we saw this once before. We saw this once before. Yeah, that's the, I'm on the contract. I didn't make the.
Cliffy, good over there? Cliffy. Cliffy.
This guy? Oh, Cliffy? I don't think he can hear you.
So they figured out how to get to the lot.
Why don't you go ahead and get started? He'll jump in when he gets back.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Brian Hilton Brand, the engineer for the project. The owners of the Pizzuto family own three lots at the end of Frog Hollow Road. Just to go over the lots quickly, we have what we call Lot 1, 83-plus acres that has a single-family house on it and a, and they say it's a trailer home. What we call Lot 2 is 2 and 1/4 acres, and we call that the access parcel. It's a narrow strip that runs along the northeast property line and that helps gain access to Lot 3, which is on the other side of the Metro North property. We are here tonight basically dealing with Lots 1 and 2 to propose a lot line change to, in the area where the existing trailer is, construct a single, remove the trailer, construct a code-compliant building site for a single-family house. There is a DEC wetland and stream that traverses the property. The new house and septic will be outside of the 100-foot buffer. We're dealing with the, we have a submission to the county health department now for the well and septic approvals. The other part of this property is to formalize a farm access because currently this, although it's the access parcel, it is undeveloped. So we'd like to create a farm access to traverse the access parcel and gain, have contiguous access to that lot number three. So the final product that we're proposing is a legal house site to clean up the lower area to meet the intent of the access parcel with a, you know, basically a dirt drive up the 2 and 1/4 acre strip. We were here a few months ago just for preliminary discussions. We scaled back the proposal based on comments we received from the board.
So what kind of agreement we have over the dirt drive to ensure access to that lot?
I don't follow the question.
So Lot 2. To get to Lot 3, you gotta go through Lot 2.
Correct.
So what stops the guy who owns Lot 2, what prevents him from preventing access to Lot 3? Is there gonna be an easement over the, over the road or?
If there's nothing in the deed, then it'll have to be. If there's nothing in the deed, uh, then it'll have to be an easement.
So what we deal, what I, what we encounter, and I'm here long enough now on the board that I'm responsible for past developments, is people coming to us, maybe someone in the future saying, "Well, now you have to find this access, because some board, previous board, took away our ac- lost our access." So, um, I want to ensure that the future owner of Lot Three is insured some type of access toward, to the main right of way.
How do they get access now?
I'm sorry, that was gonna be my point. Now, there's nothing, um, there, there's access through Lot One, which isn't the proper way, you know, to access Lot Three. Um, so I, the intent of this is to kind of clean up what's happening now and provide a formal access through the access strip to Lot Three, independent of anything happening on Lot One, so.
And where is that?
Yeah, no, and that seems like a good solution. I just wonder what legal instrument's gonna protect Lot Three.
Yeah, I mean, let me, let me just get into a couple of things I saw, because these lots were created, um, by a subdivision of Doc Sanford's property. So there was, I don't know, 300 some odd acres, and they cut it into three. So the parcel on the east side of the railroad tracks is what's referred to as Lot Three, and when I've reviewed that filed map, this parcel that was for access was actually supposed to be an easement. It was never supposed to be a separate parcel of its own. So the fact that the county, as that map was filed, made it into a parcel as opposed to an easement, has kind of muddied the waters here, to be honest with you, because there's no way that that little L-shaped parcel, regardless of it being 2.3 acres, was intended for a building lot. It's, it was, it was clearly written on the map for ingress and egress, and then the map incorrectly, I think, said ingress and egress to Lot Two, where it should've said ingress and egress to Lot Three.
And Lot Three is where the trailer is?
Lot Three is across the railroad tracks.
Right, oh, okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's some really muddy things going on with how that was filed and, and the legality of that. I, I particularly think that there's actually only two parcels here, um, in existence, the, which was from the original filed map of 11679. Um, and, you know, Craig, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but clearly, on that map, that was an easement.
Yes, and it, it actually was shown as a right of way, and there were actually only two maps. The original filed map had two lots, so.
It was, it was the three. It was the farm farm, the deer farm.
Yep.
And then these two big parcels.
Yes. So what happened here historically is a tax grade number was created for Lot Number One, right, or Lot, uh, this L, this backwards L-shaped lot, which is shown on, on this proposed subdivision or lot line re-alignment. What's interesting and something I need to point out to the applicant, or that the board may want to point this out to the applicant, is that, um, the subdivider is actually the 80-acre parcel, which is , uh, the tru- owned by the trust. So there's only two properties right here that we're dealing with that are owned in common by, um, Mr. Pazudo, Donato Pazudo. The trust, though, is actually the subdivider, because they are the ones that are giving the property through a lot line realignment to Donato. Um, so they, they should actually be the applicant, and they should be signing off on, on, um, on this lot line realignment under 130N.
Can I have the trust deed?
The trust, yeah, right, so you, you can do so, but the thing is that, you know, there are other issues that we want to point out to, to, to the rest of the board. Dan, if you want to go through, go-
Yeah, and, and I mean, if you look at the, the way the filed map was set up, it provided 100-foot of frontage, which is the requirement of road frontage for two lots. So technically, there's only enough road frontage for two lots to ever be built off of that portion of Frog Hollow Road. Um, that's, that's another one of the issues, and that, that's why it was pretty clear to me that, that was where it says easement. It was intended just for access to the back lot. Um, and in order for this to move forward, um, you know, we were suggesting that one of the ways you could do it is that you could tie the 80-some-odd acres that's across the way to one of these two, and then you still end up with two at the very end of the day, but you can still build up front with the, with the new house.
But you still want to be able to have that access to the other side of the tracks?
Only, only for, you know, farming or recreation or whatever you might use it for, but it's not, it's not necessarily a building lot.
Yeah, that's where, where I'm stuck, 'cause I did see the filed map, but then how do we dispute, you know, the, the county creating this, calling this a parcel? Like, where do we go from here to say, "No, we're just gonna call it an easement now"?
Well, you, you would be-
Come, come in, guys, and say, "Hey, don't pay attention to the file, the, the lot lines on the county. I'm gonna call it an easement, 'cause this map says so."
Well, you would override it with your filed map.
And you can merge those lots.
Yeah.
That's the proper way to do it, by merging those two lots, 'cause they're under common ownership at the moment.
Right. And the fact that they're not physically touching, we have that straightened out, you know, that's part of the, the land hook, I think is that.
Yeah, you could do a land hook through, yeah.
But the, uh, Dan, you, you commented about this in your, in your, um, discussion notes, that the applicant really should change the notation of the lot numbers to match the prior filed map?
It, it would probably make things easier, particularly when you go to the county to try to file something, because it would be a revision to Lot Two and Three of filed map, 11679. So then, you know, you would be getting assigned a new map number. It's, there's already been two other revisions, but those have been on Lot One.
Right.
So this would be 11679D, or something to that effect, you know, and then, um, but it would have to incorporate the both at that point.
Okay.
That's the railroad, yeah.
And that's their, um, access, well, not access.
Well, they're, they're entitled to, uh, at-grade, uh, access across the tracks. Um, there's also a cattle underpass, say, around here. So there's an underpass there, and then they're entitled to like an at-grade crossing here, which you can see has actually been used over the years. You can see the trails that come across. Now, you can see the rail trail.
Well, right there, that's the, um, underpass.
No, the underpass is over here. See that right there? At the very end of that little access strip? That was the cattle underpass there.
All right, so I read through your comments here, Dan. What's our, what's our action on this right now? You want us to, uh, to talk about the, uh, SEACR?
You want to be one of the future-
It's a subdivision, so.
Okay.
But, uh, it, it, I, I would, Dan, probably, uh, direct, uh, have, have chairman and board, uh, direct the applicant to just comply, you know, with those comments regarding Chapter 130, and keep him consistent with the lot numbers, so that the map amendment is consistent with the prior filed map.
You also talked about the, uh, to deem, deem the action Type Two?
Well-
Or is that already?
So if, if, if they're gonna come back and say that they want to do more than two building lots here, then in my eyes, it's a subdivision, then it would be unlisted action. So if they're gonna go with a lot line realignment-
Okay.
Seeker allows that-
Right.
-to be a Type Two action.
Understood.
Our code still calls it a subdivision, though, but, but if you're adding lots, that's where the difference is.
Understood, okay.
So this would be a, this would be a swap of land to create that buildable lot, you know, the buildable house area close to Frog Hollow Road.
Okay.
If you're not adding buildable lots, it would be a Type Two.
Right, right.
And then with, right now, we're dealing with vacant land, with the exception of the parent parcel, which is 80 acres, that's owned by the trust that has an improved, uh, hold on.
Right.
You'd have to get, if you wanted to do anything on the other side of the railroad tracks, you'd have to, um, get a variance, because it's not under, because of the access off Frog Hollow Road, right?
Um, certainly have to provide provisions for it now. That's why I'm bringing it up, you know?
Right.
So it, it- You, you don't want to pigeonhole yourself and then find out, you know, like, from the, from the town's perspective, you know, I don't want to be having you guys create something that they end up deeming they can't build on anyway later, and then all of a sudden, uh, it's going to taxes, and then we got 80 acres just sitting there that keeps going from hands to hands.
Right.
People try to do things with it, I mean, the-
Well, right now, right now, the way things are, you can't even log it, simply because of access.
Yeah, I mean, if, um, you know, they, they have, um, a letter from 2016, from Metro North, that references that at-grade crossing I was just mentioning, from Railroad Law. Railroad Law, Section 52, is the farm crossings, at-grade crossings. So, I mean, um, you know, obviously not gonna take big old logging trucks over across it like that, but, uh, you know, you'd want to be able to use that property for something, whether it's agricultural or whatnot.
So are you saying Lot Two has a, uh, has an easement over it?
Yeah, so the, the filed map, it's probably easier if you look at my screen, actually. I, I could probably bring it up on, let's do this repeat. Can you bring up the parcel?
Not for sign.
The highlighted line is the easement.
Yeah, is there an easement over there? Is there an easement?
That was an easement.
So when you say was, is it no longer an easement? Is there an easement?
For whatever reason, the county gave it a tax ID number when it was supposed to be an easement. It's, the filed map still rules to that extent. It says easement.
Yeah, and there's no easement document in the, uh-
I didn't find one, no.
In the county clerk's office?
Right.
It's ref- it's incorporated by referencing the map as an easement.
In, in the deed, it's, it references the map, which says it's an easement.
Right, which is, it, yes, there is an easement.
So I don't know how we are able to approve a building on it if it's an easement?
That's why it'd be, it'd be hope the applicant to, to merge those two properties into one, so they can make it a buildable lot.
If, if they use the land hook route to incorporate the 80-some-odd acres across from the railroad into one of those lots, then in theory, if they still wanted to build up there, they could give some of that land there, extinguish that easement in that filed map, and build that lot that they want to build now.
And now they have the necessary frontage to do so, and, and, and you avoid a rear lot-
Right.
-situation, and you avoid a possible land lock parcel.
You avoid the land, how do you avoid the land lock?
Well, you'd have the land hook through, and it would be included in one of the lots that has the frontage to Frog Hollow, and then they could, they could-
One of the two parcels.
Yeah, either one, as far as I'm concerned.
These would behave as one parcel.
Right, you could either have the 160-
You'll have one tax grade number.
Right, then the problem becomes, uh, still becomes access to it because of the, uh, what means?
Well, they have the road, they have a road here, and it goes to the other.
Oh, they don't, that's-
They're proposing one, and they've, they're working with the DEC already on that as well.
Because, because of what means?
They can, they can use the rear of their property however they see fit. It's just not going to be able to be approved with, with a, with a house or anything like that.
Yeah, and our combining those lots doesn't preclude them from gain, it, it doesn't do anything to worsen their chance of getting access over there. It's, it's not making it worse. I think what we're saying is we can't approve the, the lots as you're showing them, because you have an eas- we have a map that says it's, that one lot is an easement.
Well, that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah, so that's gotta be corrected. Well, we're trying to rectify, or trying to give you an avenue forward so that you can rectify that. So do you want to go back and work on combining those two parcels like we're suggesting?
Uh, yeah, I had that discussion with the owner, and get the surveyor involved, and try to clarify where, where this confusion stemmed from.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think necessarily that they would have to go through, uh, the lot line consolidation now. If, if they're gonna file a map, they can show all the amendments they need to on that map now.
And then deal with real property, uh, services.
As they file the map, yeah.
File a map, and just combine it into one new tax grid number.
It could be, it could be that, being the fact that they have a tax ID number on the easement, that, that's three parent parcels, and when it's filed, it becomes two.
Right.
Which is what it was intended to be.
And that would extinguish the easement?
And then they can extinguish the easement on that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as the note is clear for real property.
Yeah.
Interesting services. Yep, it's a mess.
Isn't there a land hook on there?
No, it's, the parcel on the east side of the railroad is its own.
Do you do it personally?
It's a li- it's a land lock parcel on the opposite side of the railroad.
We're selling, we have two houses.
No.
Rentals, rentals.
No, and that's how the filed map shows it, as a separate lot as well. The filed map 11679 shows it as a separate parcel over there.
There's a separate parcel.
So I had to-
Well, what we're saying is you could put the land hook and incorporate that in so that it's part of one of the two parcels on the west side of the railroad.
'Cause that property's intense.
I don't know why it's not coming up.
Yeah, I don't know either. It's a struggle.
11 acres.
Right.
So is that clear to you, what you need to do?
Yeah, I understand.
Your 11 acres.
All right.
Nice. It's convoluted situation.
It's getting a body, too.
But, I mean, because if we get this straightened out, can I, maybe we do a, a meeting before we do a full-blown submission again?
Yeah, it makes sense to have Craig involved with that as well. He's, he's got the legal mind.
Okay, who's asking?
I'm looking at parcel access right now. There's no land hook.
No, there's no land hook on there.
It has its own tax grid number.
You got into parcel access?
Yeah, we're, we're fine. It's your computer.
So it's the same owner, I own both of them.
Right, so you can, you can combine them.
My property, it's my property.
They should be combined, yeah.
But it's two different parcels. Get over there and look over his shoulder, and you'll have a better understanding.
I've been trying to bring it up on the screen, but this computer-
He, he, he's got it, seriously, he's got it on his computer.
I can't transpose it.
Look there, and you can get a better understanding.
This is one parcel.
You can, actually. You know, all, all we have are two extensions, and we have to go on. That's the problem. You just need a quorum for the extension.
Basically, they're all three in one.
Now I can use my free.
One, two, three, I mean, two you could leave if you want. I understand, Jason. You gotta get up early. You got what you want to do.
Here it is, right here.
Yeah.
So there's- Right. Easement for ingress and egress. And it says to Lot 2, but it's surrounding Lot 2. So you would never give an easement through Lot 2 for Lot 2. That's, it's intended to be an easement for ingress and egress to Lot 3, which brings it to the track, it brings it to the cattle underpass, it's, you know- This is Lot 2, the one that's developed now, farmhouse. And then Lot 3 is the wooded one across the way. Yeah.
Say, say what again? Lot 2, we switch from here.
Lot 2 on the filed map is, is the one that has the house right now.
It's the one that they, go.
Dan, the question has, from the applicant, is, do they meet the bulk area requirements? If they combine the rear lot to the, to the larger 80-acre lot, will they stand their own parcel, which is like three and a half acres, the minimum acreage for a lot?
Oh, for, if, for the, for the new building?
Yeah.
For the new house? Yeah. I, I think I had mentioned something about a couple yard setbacks that you'd have to just check in my review letter, but, but yeah, you know, it's a-
The newly created, three and a half-
That side is R45. So it only needs to be a little over an acre, so long as you can put a well and a septic and separation and all that. So in terms of area, yes. And I think, I think you can make it work with the yards as well. So then that might end up just be its own little building lot off Frog Hollow. And then the big parcel contains the side with the, you know, the east side of, of the railroad. Now, the one thing you'd have to do, though, you'd have to cut the tail off of the bottom so that you can actually get to the cattle crossing or the at-grade crossing.
I see the, it really doesn't matter.
You know what I'm saying? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I hope you, you've got, you know, it straight and clear in your mind, because I don't. I'm the chairman. Very good. So let's move on to the extensions, all right? No. Are we done, Dan?
There's extensions.
There's extensions.
They're quick.
They're quick. Right. Yep. Brian thought that Elena States was on here for an extension.
It is. It's on the back side.
Okay, the back. All right. There it is. Okay. So Camp Luddington?
Yeah. So we had a draft resolution that we circulated around, pretty standard stuff. You guys know this, the Trust for Public Land.
Yep.
They're just trying to, you know, take care of a few things before they can file the map. And I think that they're also kind of working on the other deals that they need to get up to that 500-acre threshold, so.
Right.
You know, we are suggesting that, you know, being this such a low-impact thing.
I would give them the maximum. You know, we've gone as far as three, haven't we?
We have in the past. Now, they, they actually, they don't think that they need that much. So what we suggested was two 90 days, and that would, I'm sorry, one 90-day extra, which, this one already goes through, let's see, it goes through June 11th of 2023 now. So they're here early on the extension.
Okay.
So we said one more 90 day. We'll bring them to September 9th, 2023.
So two 90 days?
One 90 day extra.
Oh, one. All right.
Because they're here early on this one.
Okay. Can I have a motion for?
So moved.
All right, that's a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. And, and then for Great Hollow, it's the same situation, same applicant. But in this case, since that one's about to expire, that would be two 90 days. So that would bring it from April 18th of 2023, and that would grant them through October 15th of 2023.
Okay, two 90-day extensions for Great Hollow.
Two 90-day extensions.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and Elena States?
And Elena, Craig can attest to this. They've been, they've been working with all the parties. They're, they're knocking at the doorstep. Brian mentioned it earlier, too. They still had all that issues with the DC, WWA, and all that.
This is their last, very last, in case they need another one, maybe another one.
They are in the red zone.
All right. How many?
So on this one, we, we had one additional that would bring them through June 24th of 2023.
I have a motion for one 90 day, Elena States. This is their third, the last. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Good night, people.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason.